...
...
Well, again, everyone, thank you for coming out tonight. We'll begin as we always do with our administrative remarks. Have the evening's color in please. It's good. And how many things goes to you this evening?
I actually have a couple of comments.
Okay.
One of the items on the agenda discussion item regarding the JFK paving projects. I just want to give a brief update.
Right.
So, back in February, at the February 13th Board of Education meeting, our architects presented a project status update and they presented the project budget. At that point in time, they presented a conservative look at our budget and felt that we were running out of money at that point in time. I recently had a conversation with them and they provided us with some encouraging news, that they were able to successfully negotiate some of the claims that were being disputed at that point in time. And also some preventative measures that are required by the DEP in terms of stormwater pollution prevention. So, they're going to be here at the May 8th Board of Education meeting to provide an update to the project, including the DEP approval process, which is still not yet completed. We have a bid opening on May 3rd for the paving project, so on May 8th, we'll have a much clearer picture of our position with regard to the project budget and also with the bids that we receive on May 3rd. So, again, our architects and construction managers will be here on May 8th to provide Board of Education with an update on the JFK paving project. I also wanted to let everyone know that a bridge version of the budget statement was just released this afternoon. We wanted to get it out in advance of the May 4th deadline. So, just the financial information has been released. I encourage everyone to take a look at our website to look at the budget statement. And again, all other information and supplemental to the actual numbers will be available on May 4th. And that concludes my comments.
Doctor Carlson and Dr. Dambor.
Thank you, Doctor Dambor. If you don't mind, I'll withhold my comments for this evening as well.
Carlson and Dr. Dambor.
Good evening, Doctor Dambor, Board trustees. Just a couple of announcements. I want to point out that the spring athletic season is in full bloom. We already have some of our female cross players who are doing an amazing job. Lauren Kraft, Megan Will, and Daniel Heintz. So, we wanted to shout them out and let everyone know that they're just doing an amazing job with the goalie positions that they hold on as athletes. I also want to thank the ENL team at JFK Elementary School, and that would be Gabriel Lapri, Lauren Lennon, Christine Palician, and Myra Vario, who are spreading kindness with their kindness rocks. They created, or actually they found rocks, they painted them, and they put just messages of kindness on the rocks, and they pass those around all year long to spread their kindness. They actually, they tweeted this photo where the teacher at the Margers Stone in Douglas High School in Harper, Florida, received a collection of kindness rocks from the JFK ENL teachers. So, that's just awesome, and I wanted to thank them for doing that. Last week, Doctor Stephen Dewey was here under the direction of, I should say, the generosity of the JFK PTA, the C.E. Star, H.H. Wells PTA, and the Brewster High School, PTSA, and SEPTA. He made a presentation that all of our adolescents and teens should hear, which is the impact that vaping and juuling and drugs and alcohol has on their brains and their bodies. We take or video the presentation. It's on our website. It's also sent out today and was also emailed to our high school students so that they can take a look at that and really consider not being a part of it with the students who, across the country, have found that to be their new sort of pastime. You may also know that Doctor Dambor was an activist for the district assembling a mental health task force to address the growing mental health issues plaguing some children. Several years ago, the tragedy before us was the shooting, unfortunately, at Sandy Cook. And as a result of this task force, two mental health counselors were hired. Doctor Dambor is also involved on a larger scale at the New York State Education Department, where he is promoting the importance of mental health and social emotional wellness and awareness. As reported in a recent onboard newspaper, which is the official newspaper for the New York State School Boards Association, Doctor Dambor is in the, among a group of leaders who is helping to develop the guidelines to help districts to adopt a comprehensive mental health education curriculum that focuses on mental health, social emotional wellness, well-being, and physical wellness. And I wanted to thank him on behalf of all the children of Brewster and all the children in New York State for his role in really making sure that that comes to fruition. So, thank you, Doctor Dambor.
That was unplanned. I'm coming out here. About a month ago, we began a conversation about where we're at in terms of a budget season, where we think we might be going. And because I'm the old guy on the block, I decided to put a big historical perspective on it and talk about with pride, on behalf of you, all the things that we've accomplished together in at least these 18 years. I felt the need to do that because I wanted to get out of the little box of a budget season and whether or not we're going to put together a budget, whether or not we're going to test it. Not my concern. My concern was to leave with you a picture, which I think is valuable and important, and that is the Brewster that I've come to know in these 18 years. And I'm trying to tell you then, and bring it back again tonight, that this is not a political thing of a diddy here that I do. This is from the heart. It's always been from my heart to try to get the best programming and physical structures in place to serve our children. That's the truth as I know it. I didn't make it up for tonight. This illustration you've seen before, thank goodness, because I didn't invent it for tonight either, but I've used it countless times around this state in all sorts of presentations. I just did it in the training again last Thursday, to emphasize one overriding, important perspective. There at the point of the pyramid is the fundamental question that I'm trying to get all audiences, including our own, to focus on day in, day out, but most particularly at times like this when it's getting darn rough, darn rough. I would like to suggest that the point of this pyramid, that question is overriding. It's not Republican, it's not Democrat, it's not Liberal, it's not Conservative, it's not old, it's not young, it's us talking about what really matters on behalf of our children, today, tomorrow, or the next day. And our children means all of our children. So, the only agenda that I know seriously is this agenda. Yeah, we talk about pedagogy, yeah, we talk about dollars and cents, yeah, we talk about what all they tell us to talk about with reform agendas, and get all of that. But the most important piece of our agenda is that question. What are we doing now for our children? Where are we going tonight, and our conversation is up to you. If I were your coach advisor, psychologist, I should have my head in there, I would try to suggest to you that we put on our best show, folks, and I don't mean in a show sense. I'm appealing to you, Brewster, my fellow taxpayers, to give it a good run tonight, give it a good, healthy conversation, but be respectful, be constructive, and please, 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 help us to get to a better place by the time the day is done. The world is watching us. You say that's crazy, Brewster. No, the world's watching us because social media have opened up the world to who we are. You will remember that seven-second video clip from last summer, darn ugly stuff. Oh, I got a guy from Oklahoma just felt the need to tell us all about it and how he hates our district for being like that, our whole district, painted by a seven-second clip. Okay? We couldn't control that. It's done. It lasted perpetuity in cyberspace. But we can control the image of Brewster tonight, for better or for worse, and that's the message going forward. So, I'm counting on you, on behalf of you, I'm counting on you. Make it a great discussion, get us to a better place, please. And at the end of the day, where I started this conversation off a month ago was, Brewster, pride. Let your pride show forth tonight. Thank you. We go with presentation coming up.
Good evening, everyone. We begin tonight with the first part of our presentation regarding an overview of our free and reduced lunch eligibility. Joined tonight...
Can I just interrupt? I am getting over. We will have questions and answers, I promise you twice. Once Mr. Carlson speaks, once again, Miss Goff speaks. So, we will get through all of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Joined tonight by Kathy Ash, who is our Director of Child Nutrition Services, and is going to be able to present an overview of the USDA program.
Sorry, Detective. I am here to introduce me. I am Kathy Ash, I'm the Director of... Sorry, this is not my forte. The National School Lunch Program is a federally assisted meal program operating in public and non-private schools and residential care institutions. It provides low-cost, no-cost meals to children every day. The program was signed into law by President Harry Truman in 1946. The United States Department of Agriculture governs the eligibility guidelines, requirements, and verification processes involved in determining free and reduced eligibility. Every July, the USDA updates free and reduced price income eligibility and provides required documents for administering the program. We have a Board of Education policy number 5405, which is our wellness policy. The goal of our program is to feed hungry children. Next, you'll see an overview of how the program is financed. This school lunch program is self-sustaining. It is at no cost to taxpayers. The slide that you're looking at now has three price categories for meals. Some students receive free meals, reduced meals, and the paid meals. It outlines what each student pays for their meal, what reimbursement will receive at the state level, and what reimbursement will receive at the federal level, creating a total revenue. Please notice that the paid meals have also a subsidized rate of 43 cents. This slide shows how a family category is determined. There are three methods families can qualify for free and reduced price meals, by income application, using income thresholds established by the USDA through direct certification from federal state programs such as Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, federal SNAP, Temporary Assistance for Navy Families for TANF, and Medicaid. There's other source categorable from local government programs such as Head Start, Booster Care, Homeless, and Runway. Let's talk about the first method, income application. Every family receives an application. It's included in our calendar, on the child nutrition webpage, and in back-to-school manuals. The application is accompanied by a parent letter. Applications are sent to my office for processing. The complete application must contain list of all household children who attend school, list with any government assistance, TANF, SNAP, connecting PI or FED, the amount, the source, and the frequency of current income for each household member, the total household size, and the signature of an adult certifying the information is true, and any false statements made lead to prosecution under applicable state and federal law. My office reviews applications for completeness, then we enter the information into a software program that calculates determination based on household size and income. What you see up there is the USDA income guidelines for reduced price meals. The left-hand side shows the family size, and then the income is broken out depending on how a family reports it annually, monthly, et cetera, et cetera. The second method is direct certification. Direct certification is an electronic match for benefit awarding agencies. It's for SNAP and for Medicaid. The program has come more sophisticated over the years. In 1314, we only had SNAP information available. In 1415, Medicaid was added to that process. In 2017-18, we had an upgraded matching system, which used the NYSSIS, New York State Student Information System, to match the records. These agencies directly update student information. And we now receive this on a monthly basis. The benefits of direct certification relieve the food service authorities from having to verify and match at a local level. It reduces the income application and burden on the food service authorities to process paper applications. The food service authority must notify families that have been approved for free meals and provide them an opportunity to decline the benefits. Victor likes this slide, I'm going to pass it on. This one, I'll take.
Okay, so, based on the numbers you see here in the past five years, of students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. I'm directing to the fourth column, the fifth column from the right, the number of students by direct certification. So, as Kathy described, there are two main ways in which a student will read the eligibility guidelines for free or reduced lunch. The column here, again, the fifth one from the left, number of students by direct certification, as you can see over the past five years, that number has increased by 351 students up to 794 students. As Kathy described, these direct certifications, these numbers are provided to school districts directly from the state, which receive it directly from state agencies. There is no requirement for parents or guardians of children to request these benefits. The state is instead telling us that these students are entitled to these benefits. The fourth column from the right, the number of students by income application. The income application is the traditional pen and paper application method. And as you can also see here with the past five years, that number has declined in terms of paper applications from 332 down to 229. So, you see there's obviously an inverse relationship, as Kathy mentioned, the software or the state's method for identifying students who are eligible has become more sophisticated, so therefore it's reduced the number of income applications. The following slide, actually, and based on this data footage we have here, is that 78% of students who are free or reduced eligible qualify through the direct certification method, meaning the state tells us that these students are entitled to free or reduced lunch. The other 229 students become eligible from the traditional income application method. And this is a line graph showing the increase over the past five years. As you can see, the orange line is the number of students who qualify through the direct certification. Again, the state is reporting to us who is eligible, and the number of students who qualify through the income application, again, the traditional pen and paper method, has been declining for each of the past five years.
The final chapter of this story is called the verification process. The USDA regulations require that all school food service authorities participating in the National School Lunch Program verify a random sample of approved free and reduced price meal income applications that are on file as of October 1st. Verification is only required when eligibility is determined through income application process, not through direct certification. Households selected for verification will receive a notification letter customized from USDA SED prototype. The letter requests current pay stubs, award letters from assistance agencies for benefits such as Social Security, or SSI, or support payment, decrees, or reports, et cetera. Warns that information must be provided by a specified date, and failure to do so will result in termination of benefits. All families selected must provide information that verifies or confirms their eligibility, or the families must be notified formally and writing that their benefits will change. Applications can be disqualified for the following reasons: failure to provide documentation within the stated timeline, or the documents cannot substantiate the information previously provided. Results are submitted to New York State Education Department by November 15. An administrative review of the program is conducted by state ed every three years to verify the school food service authorities are in compliance with all aspects of the program. Brewster's last review resulted in no findings noted.
And we've also included a link to that last five results. In addition to that, Kathy reached out to her counterpart up at SED, and the font is extremely small, but I'll read this as quickly as I can. As a representative for the New York State Education Department of Child Nutrition, I am ready to support you in reassuring those concerned that your process for reviewing free reduced price meal applications is conducted accurately and correctly, according to the federally mandated regulations set forth by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA. Brewster CSD's food service operations are reviewed once every three years as per USDA regulations. The administrative review conducted last year resulted in a complete compliance with the eligibility guidelines. All applications must be accepted at face value. Households with no income or very low income are taken at face value unless information is known that fraudulent activity may be occurring. If fraud is suspected with known, I tell it says known cause, it may be verified for cause during the annual verification process. The annual verification process is conducted where a random sampling of all applications is conducted. All confidential information regarding household applications will be disclosed to only those with authority within the school district. For your district to continue receiving state and federal reimbursements for meals served to students, the USDA guidelines and regulations must be followed. The other option would be to not participate in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, and all students would have to pay full price for meal. And I'll remind you back to a slide that we showed earlier with regard to the reimbursements for every meal sold. So, you saw that we showed an example of paid meals, that the state and federal government reimburse us 43 cents for every meal sold, even to those students who do not qualify for free reduced lunch. So, if we were not to participate in this program, we would not be receiving the reimbursement even for those paid meals sold. So, does anyone have any questions with regard to the free reduced lunch application program? Again, it's largely, it's entirely governed by the USDA guidelines. So, the question was, could we challenge any of the 78% of students who are, who qualify through the direct certification method? Right. The direct certification method, meaning that the state tells us that students qualify. And the answer is no. The only, and the reason for that is because some state organization is already certifying that a family qualifies through whatever, you know, whatever process they use, and therefore the state is simply just passing on that information to us, telling us that those students qualify.
We give the families an opportunity to decline those benefits later, as we did earlier. So, if we don't, if our family gets not qualified, and you don't want to accept the benefits, you send us a letter back, decline the benefits, and we remove them from the program.
So, first off, I just want to thank you guys. I know we have had a lot of emails to the board and to the administration and asking a lot of these questions, so I do want to say thank you for putting this together, because I know it's a lot of work to bring all of this forth. A couple of things I just want to bring up. So, one, is the SNAP and Medicare zero-based out each year? So, once you have approval from the feds, next year, we start at zero with all free lunches, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, one of the things I just want to point out is the numbers in this presentation were different from the numbers on the data.nys, you know, so I think the one that we frequently use and quote with you guys, that is reported from the district to New York State. So, I would want to just understand what the anomaly is. We saw about 88 more students in 2013-14 than what the state reflects, 111 in 2014-2015, 43 more in 2015-2016, and 94 last year. So, there's clearly an anomaly, and that site's usually one of the best sources for district-reported data. So, I would ask that, you know, if you don't know it now, just respond and let us know why there would be an anomaly in that program.
Could you just, the state, the website that you're referencing again is what?
State report.
Oh, that's the state report.
Yeah, exactly. So, one of the other things is, when we had attended the March 27th meeting, when we saw, when you guys presented the budget, you talked about the environmental stresses. And one of the things, when we were like, oh my God, how can we have 33% poverty in our town? You know, nobody feels that, nobody sees that, you know, it just seems like a very high number. high number. And I personally believe, and I'm sure we'll get into it during the residency fraud issue, that a lot of that is driven by residency fraud. So, two things on the Medicare and the SNAP, is the fact that, I believe, one is federal, potentially both are federal, I don't know, and they're federal. So they're not necessarily tying that to say that that child that's getting that benefit lives in Brewster, and therefore that entitlement. So that has nothing to do with you guys, but it's just one of the things when we look at residency fraud as an issue, you know, is their address verified and so forth, because they're just getting Medicaid and SNAP, and therefore it's not tied to a residency base.
It's okay, I'll speak to that, and I actually have a slide in the Title I portion that describes it. But basically, they both, both the poverty rate, right, that you see on the census site, and then what you see for free and reduced lunch rate, uses federal poverty data, but they're different thresholds. So what you'll see is that, in order to qualify as
No, I understand that in the
130 or 185.
Yeah, totally get that. But my point is, is that when you have a child that's automatically verified through Medicaid and through SNAP, that doesn't necessarily mean they're a child that is actually living in this district. So I'm just raising that as a point, because I think a lot of the things that we brought up on these three topics tie back to residency fraud as one of the main concerns and an underlying factor in Brewster having a 33% poverty rate, when, you know, that's a hard pill for us to swallow. But the last thing I just want you to bring up.
If I could just, so, so they're really, it's the same measure, but different thresholds. So it would, basically, what I had in one of the slides is that you could make up to $44,000 for a family of four and qualify for free and reduced lunch, but the actual poverty rate that would show up in the census data would be for any families that made money, made $24,000 or less for that same family of four. So there would be more people that would potentially qualify within that amount. So that could partially explain some of the reason why you can see differences between the two numbers. If that makes sense? If I explained that correctly?
Okay. I still think of 30.
Yeah. Sorry, Michelle, I just have to correct you, though. I actually work in administrative capacity in a hospital, so part of what I do is, we identify patients who qualify for Medicaid. They also use a similar threshold as what you guys are using. So a child coming in that would qualify for CHIP, which is Medicaid, which is one of your direct identifiers, is a similar threshold. So basically, if you qualify for SNAP outside of school, or you qualify for Medicaid, it falls into the exact same threshold as what you're using. The poverty line is a base, and then there are different programs that use a different threshold, but when you're identifying poverty, it's the exact same threshold.
Right. And what I'm saying is that for the free and reduced lunch rate, it's 130% of that poverty rate, 185%.
Actually, SNAP is the same. It's almost identical.
Okay.
Just the last one I want to make, when we were talking on March 27th, it was brought up that we documented that 103 of the number of free lunches was actually from Green Chimneys. And one of the things that we checked on with Green Chimneys was, is Brewster able to count those 103? And so, just want to raise your attention that they said that that's not the case, and as a residential childcare institution, Green Chimneys reports their own numbers from the program, that any reporting by Brewster would qualify as double-digit dipping. So we would need to just make certain that we are not counting those numbers, because Green Chimneys reports that on their own, and then you would have, you know, a challenge with what we're working.
So I'm not sure that the Green Chimneys numbers are in that presentation. Where they do show up, Jamie, is in the Title I grants, because we have to report that, because they're a private school in our metropolitan area, right? So there's 101 residential students, that even though they're from different counties, we still report that, in fact, to our per pupil expenditure for the grants, and that works towards their Title I and II allocation. So I'm not sure if those are two different things that we were talking about, but I don't believe that they are.
No, not at all. It's particular numbers. I know we only include students that are in our student information system, our student database, that's the mismatching.
That's perfect. It was just a conversation that we had during the March 27th, so I wanted to make certain that we had clarity on the fact that we cannot, we should not be counting those things.
We are obligated to provide them a proportion of the Title I funds, that's why we're being seen, that's why we count, and we're required to count that 101 or so children. That's the only reason. You're right, they report their own numbers, we don't report them, we only are required to provide them a proportion of Title I funds.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We can move on to the next part of our conversation. Thank you, Kathy. So I'm going to be joined by one of our attorneys to discuss this topic, residency. Obviously, it's a very complicated matter, and we often consult with our attorneys on these matters. So I'm going to ask Mr. Junger, our hand, to give an overview of the legal aspects of residency. So just as a quick overview, we have a map here showing the part of northern Westchester area, and as we all know, the border of Carmel, Falling, and Noyt Salem in Brewster, and then our connected borders are New Fairfield and Danbury Public Schools.
Just a few minutes of your time, greatly appreciated. Just wanted to talk a little bit about what the rules are, about who can go to school in the Brewster Central School District on a tuition-free basis, what the rules are, and what the process is for determining is someone here legally or illegally. To cut to the chase a little bit, like a lot of things that govern school districts, most of the rules are prescribed by the Supreme Court of the United States, federal courts, state courts, federal laws, like the Stuart McKinnney Event of Homeless Act, and state laws. So the district has a policy, all the districts have policies, they're slightly different, but most of it is really top-down management that the district basically administers on who can go to school here on a tuition-free basis. So let's cut to the chase. Who can usually go to any school district on a tuition-free basis? Usually, but not exclusively, residents of the school district. When are you a resident? There's a test that's generally accepted, and what that is, is that you have to be physically present here, and you have to intend to remain here indefinitely. So if Victor lives on Farm to Micro Grove, he's got, you know, a lease to be here for a year, two years, three years, he's physically present, he intends to remain here indefinitely. And that test worked really well for a long time, it was pretty straightforward, right? But around the late 80s, things started to change, and homelessness became more of a national and local problem. And what happened was, people realized, if I'm living in an apartment in Wolfre Gardens in Yonkers, wait, Yonkers doesn't exist anymore, right? But suppose Wolfre Gardens, the apartment burned down, and I have to go live with my affluent relatives in Skarsgård, if I had any, or if the Department of Social Services put me up on a place in White Plains, I wouldn't be physically present in Yonkers anymore, but I intend to remain there, I intend to return there. So there are some people, when they become homeless, they don't need the test anymore. Yonkers could argue, I'm not physically present there. Skarsgård could argue, I don't intend to remain there. So there's this gap. So in that gap, the Stuart McKinnney Homeless Act came, there are federal laws, state laws, and one of the big exceptions to residency is, if you become homeless, you are allowed to attend school district where you're presently located, if you're doubled up with your relatives, or the school district of origin, the school district Yonkers in that case, where I was when I became homeless. So that was a big exception to the usual rule. A couple of the other exceptions include an unaccompanied youth or a later variation on homeless. If someone gets thrown out of the house for a period of time, has a fight with the parents, goes and goes someplace else, and they're living someplace where they don't have a fixed, adequate, and regular nighttime residence, that's kind of the definition of homeless, they qualify too, as being able to select a district where they're currently present, or the district where they came from. Some of the other exceptions, the usual rules on residency, and this is by court policy, and this is all approved by case law from the Commission of Education and other places, that if I am going to go to contract to buy a house in Brewster, and my son's in ninth grade, they can say, show us the signed contract in September, and if you move in, you show us a deed by October, full-aidance stay, because that's for purposes of educational continuity. So I may be commuting, you know, from Yonkers or someplace that first month, I'm not really a resident, but school districts are allowed to allow future residents who have some proof, like a contract, that they intend to remain in Brewster, they're allowed them to come in too. You're a border district, and you guys all know that. District has a policy with the state that first, you're allowed to do, saying that if the border actually intersects or bisects, you're actually dwelling, not just property, but dwelling. So when we should pay property taxes, school district taxes, and there's a valid survey, a fairly recent survey showing with the state line intersection dwelling, future 10 schools in Brewster. Another exception is, and this is again for purposes of education continuity, kid has gone here from K to 12, is a bear, but bears are through and through, but parents moved to, down to Carolinas or something, senior year. State law and case law allow us to continue that student who doesn't really reside here anymore, because the parents moved, they allow us to continue that kid until the end of the year. The reason, again, educational continuity, the reason why that student wouldn't be considered a resident anymore, is because when you look at what someone's present intention to remain is, as far as a student, state law generally looks for what their parents' intent is. And if the parents moved out, generally that means you're not a resident anymore, but not always. There's an old exception, which has pretty much gone by the boards at this point, because I understand the plus of the teacher's contract sunset many years ago, that said that certified staff members who, their children could go, could attend school here, if they're a full-time staff member, as of August 31st, 2006, you can do the math a lot better than I can, those kids are just about almost completely, but that's no longer an issue here. Foreign exchange students, every district can allow someone, I think, on a J1 visa to attend, and that's usually only for a year at a time, has to be approved by the superintendent under approved exchange program. So most of the time, you have to show that you're actually physically present here, and that you intentionally remain here indefinitely by what your parents have expressed, like signing a lease, or mortgage, or deed, or showing a library card, or something like that, but it's not always the case. Another thing that comes up with some regularity is divorced parents, for example. One parent lives in Brewster, one parent lives in Maybach. That, there are examples of variation on the theme there, you usually have the right to send your student, if the parents divorce, to the school district of the parent who is the custodial, the legal custodial of the parent. But there's cases from the Commission of Education that say, sometimes the student can even go to the district where the non-custodial parent resides, if they made a agreement that two divorced parents between themselves, to shift the arrangement, so that the student is actually in Brewster. So you could see somebody who know that the father, who's the custodial parent, lives in Maybach, but the kid's going here, it may be that that situation has been examined, and actually they've shifted the responsibility for the non-custodial parent. All perfectly legal, and something that we have to accept if we're faced with that factual scenario. Now, I don't mean to be dumb, and I usually have to push the, when do I hit here? Down, down. That one? Did that do it? Yeah, homeless. So we talked a little bit about homeless kids, one of the biggest examples of instances where someone may not actually live here, but they still have the right to go here. They came homeless in Brewster, and they're living in Maybach, they can continue to go to school here, or if they became homeless in Maybach, or are now in Brewster, they can continue to go here. This definition includes, basically, again, people who might live in trailer parks, but that doesn't mean that everyone lives in a trailer park. It's homeless, it means that if that's transitory, that place, they're not going to be there for a long time, but for a few days, that doesn't mean that they're a resident of the trailer park, or that they're homeless. Migratory children can qualify as homeless if they don't have a fixed, adequate, and regular nighttime residence. And unaccompanied youth, we mentioned, if they're going out of the house for a extended period of time, and they don't have a fixed, adequate, and regular nighttime residence, maybe they're doubled up with four of the kids in one bedroom, they still may be able to claim homeless status and choose either district to attend. So, we talked about what the test is, they have to be actually physically present here usually, and intend to remain indefinitely. And we talked about the fact that students, definitely presumed to be that, and their parents. There are situations, however, where a student may be living apart from their parent, and the reason has nothing to do with coming to Brewster, because they like the Brewster schools better than the Falling schools and the Noyt Salem schools. It may be that the, but parents are both living in Falling, but for some reason, they physically can't get a walk with the student, there's a hard-looking situation at home, and there's an aunt and uncle in Brewster, who even though they're not legal guardians, they're willing to take the youngster in. And as long as the parents live in Falling, say, basically, they've had an affidavit, a sworn statement, saying, this has nothing to do with attending the Brewster schools, we just can't all live in the same house, and the aunt and uncle in Brewster have been kind enough to accept responsibility for day-to-day decisions, and they're accepting financial support, in essence, active guardian, then Brewster would be required, if that was checked out, to allow that student whose parents live in a different district to attend here. A student can also be emancipated. Like we said, usually the test is, where do the parents live, and where do they intend to live? An emancipated student would be somebody who's under 18, but is physically independent, on their own, separate from the parents, I may not see that a whole lot these days, that does happen, and used to happen, maybe some more, maybe not, but an emancipated minor could also determine where they want to live, as long as they could show that they're supporting themselves, they're living apart from their parent, and they can go to school in the district where they decide to live. One thing that comes up a lot, and this was, I mentioned the Supreme Court a couple minutes ago, the kids go, filed against them back in 1982. State of Texas added a statute of law that said that you can't go to school if your parents are illegal aliens, because, you know, we're not citizens, we're not assuming that burden. And in fact, if you want, one school district, involved in this case, had a charge of $1,000 a year if the non-resident students wanted to come to their school district. The Supreme Court held that it is illegal, illegal, it violates the equal protection clause, to hold against the students who are actually physically present and intend to remain in these school districts indefinitely, it's illegal to hold against them, the fact that their parents are here illegally, that they're undocumented aliens. So the fact that your mom or dad is here illegally, that you're undocumented alien, is not a reason where the district legally to say that you can't enroll. And what you can do is, they still have to show that they live here, and they intend to remain here, but you can't ask things on the registration packet, like, give us your social security number, because only a student would have that. Fact, you can't ask them if you're a taxpayer of the district, because the right to attend schools is limited generally to residents and not taxpayers. So that's a major, that's a major issue, and it's the law of the land, the Supreme Court has told us that this is it, so we can't hold with that that the kids may be here illegally, or their parents may be here illegally, as far as being non-citizens, against them, that's been the law since 1982. What's the process, how do you do it? Again, this is top-down given to us by the state, the regulations are right in 102Y of the Commissioner's Regulations, you can look them up if you've got time and the inclination. And what happened is, a few years ago, they switched the usual sequence, and they said that what happens first is the second bullet, that the student, when they come and show up at the district's doorstep, they first must be enrolled, let them in, and then the district's residency officer, Mr. Carlson, has free business base to require, to receive documents that might prove residency, and then make a determination. So they have to let the kids in first, and then you have free business base, they can play catch-up and look at it. For homeless kids, the rules are completely different, you cannot hold up their registration based on the absence of records from the prior school district that might help you make that determination. So the laws on the homeless kids are very, they're very much in favor of letting those kids in, and allowing them to continue until, basically, they finish the school year. So those laws are very, again, expansive in the favor of the students. Can you require any specific type of proof? Is this like when you go to the post office, and you want to, you know, get a passport or something, State Department, you say, need two of this, and two of this? While there are things that are acceptable to the district, like the usual thing, a driver's license, or, you know, other types of proof, you can't say that that's the only thing that you can present. Because someone may be here legitimately as a resident, they might not have a driver's license, they might not have one of those, what do they call them, non-driver's license, you guys know better than me. So the idea is, there's a whole list of things that you can present, but we can't tell anybody if you don't have that particular thing, we won't let you in. And we'll give each individual, because sometimes people actually present affidavits. And each individual, because sometimes people actually present affidavits. Do they have to be a taxpayer? No. Do they tap out a parent residing in the district? Like we said, it depends, homeless kids and unaccompanied youths, if they're not allied with them. Here's some of the types of proof, pretty much what you would expect. The last thing is something that we should talk about, the very last bullet, if they don't have any of the other proofs, which are the usual thing, you would see that they're whether you're here and you intend to remain here, if someone is here as a sponsor from something like the Office of Refugee Resettlement, even though they may not have a parent in the district or other types of proof, that may be something that the district may have to consider and let them in. So there's a whole list of things which may be acceptable, we can't really say that if you don't have this, we're not gonna take you, because that basically would offend the process, because it's a flexible determination based on what the living arrangements are, and are you physically present here, you intend to remain here indefinitely. Some of the things that have come up, and we've gone on too long, in 2014, 2015, Swoolea, for example, the AG, so the New York Attorney General, investigated, it's about two dozen of the school districts, in excess of 20 anyway of the list, and entered into consent decrees with them, because they were asking questions that they weren't supposed to ask in the normal process, like what's your social security number? So this is an active issue, and it does get released. What are the investigations, how do they generally proceed? Generally, the district receives some credible information, it could be from a teacher, it could be a credible tip, or something else that is appropriate to pursue residency. Victor's office would send an inquiry letter to the parent, saying, you may not be a resident, and then he gives him a deadline, what about Victor's, so give us study documents that attempt to show that you are a resident, and then if the parent doesn't provide proof, and it's determined by the residency officer that the student's not a resident, there's a letter that goes out, this is all a matter of due process, required by state regulations, that tells the parent, effective this date, will be excluded, you'll have to go, and then the parent has the right to appeal that to the Commission of Education, who may say, you know, I'm gonna let the student stay in the district for a couple months, especially if it's the end of the school year, until I decide the issue. So that's all state law, that's not something that Brewster has a choice about, that's what the process is, and it's all because of due process, and the Supreme Court cases, and federal statutes. Do school districts use investigators? Yeah, they do, from time to time, it's okay to use, it's legal to use a private investigator to check out whether someone is not really living in the district. But it's usually not a matter of paying for a night, or two nights, or something like that, it can get quite expensive, and require quite a period of time for the Commission of Education to say to his or her satisfaction, that this person isn't really living here on a consistent basis. So that is available, but it's usually not a one-shot deal. You want to pick it up here, Victor?
As Jim mentioned, we do solicit the services of a, we solicit the services of a private investigator in certain circumstances, and as Jim mentioned, in order for a case to be upheld, in order... Can you hear me now? In order for a case to be upheld, we need to prove that a family is not living for consecutive, no, please. Okay, so, I'm sorry, so what we were saying is that we do solicit a private investigator in certain cases, and we have that investigator performing surveillance for an extended period of time, so then we build a strong case when we're going to be making determination that a student is not a resident. As Jim mentioned, some of the challenges that we face are the appearance of discriminatory practices. Again, the New York State Attorney General investigated a number of school districts back in 2014, the State Education Department actually changed their guidelines, as Jim mentioned, and actually made it more, you know, less restrictive in the types of documents that we can request. Privacy is an issue, that we cannot disclose personally identifiable information of a student to, even to the staff member who initially reported it. Another challenge is tracking residents and temporary housing renters, people who are doubled up with other family members, and the fact that residency is fluid, and sometimes, and this case actually was one of the cases that I handled, and we actually built a case, we went to residency determination, we made a determination that this family were not residents at the district, but residency is fluid, and they came back, and then they provided new documentation that they moved to a new residence. So we invested a lot of money in terms of attorneys and private investigators, we built a case, we were successful in the case, however, because residency is fluid, they were able to move back into the district, legitimately move back into the district at a different address. Shared custody agreements are challenging and living arrangements, as Jim mentioned, that you have, unfortunately, sometimes you have families that are split, and students that are back and forth between the two parents. As I mentioned, investigations are very expensive, and they don't always result in disenrollment. Oftentimes, we'll have a residency investigator go out, and they'll track the family to the apartment that they say that they're living in, and it doesn't result in a disenrollment. Parents and guardians of dating are required communications, we're required to document each step of the way, the measures that we've taken to ensure that they've been notified of our concern, and in severe cases, we'll use a process server to make sure they get any communications from us. The New York-Connecticut border property issue, as Jim mentioned, we amended our Board of Education policy, we actually had a family that we denied initial resident, initial registration to appeal to the Commissioner of Education, and the Commissioner of Education ruled in Brewster's favor, saying that families who, you know, the families who live in Connecticut, although a portion of their property is located in Brewster, they're not entitled to attend Brewster schools. Other challenges, incomplete tips, so oftentimes, we'll get a call saying that somebody witnessed a student being picked up or dropped off by a car with Connecticut plates, we've gone to our school resource officers, they're not able to run license plates unless a crime's been committed, and at a minimum, the district registrar needs to know the name of the student in order to begin an investigation. And also, it's challenging, we only have three business days to receive review and determine residency for new registrants. So, at the start of this, at the start of January, we employed a district registrar. Up until that point, registration was handled individually at each school building, so we have four separate staff members handling registrations, and when you have four separate people handling registrations, the procedures that they employ are not always consistent. So the benefit of having a district registrar is that we have one person who's responsible for ensuring that we're consistent in the application of the registration process. Temporary housing lists, as I mentioned, one of our challenges, for each of our challenges, these are things that we recognize and things that we're working on improving. We're now creating a temporary housing list, so if a new registrant arrives and is showing proof of residency by showing a lease that's due to expire in two months, we're writing down the date that that lease is expiring, and within those two months, we're going to request an update of residents, of new residency documents, because we know that their current residency is temporary. Changes of address, changes of address, we have a new process in place, they must be completed in person, and when a change of address is requested, they have to provide the same standards of proof for establishing residency as they do at initial registration. They can't simply just call and say, I need you to, you know, change my address to some other place, they start the whole process over again. A new form that we're using is a landlord affidavit form, and we're requiring that the landlord certify that the above information is known to be true of a penalty of law. We are actively searching for duplicate addresses based on some feedback that we heard from you, and we're going to be sending inquiries to those families listed under those addresses. And we will be precipitating legal action to those who commit residency fraud in the form of tuition reimbursement. I mentioned last, last time, is the consideration of starting a residency task force, and again, all of these procedures we began to employ with the district registrar, we're, you know, we're eager to hear any other feedback, any other recommendations that you have with regard to our processes and how we can improve them. So if you are interested in joining a residency task force, please email our districtregistrar at registrar@brewsterschools.org. Okay, so we went over a lot, does anyone have questions relating to the registration process and residency process? So the question, the question was, what happens if you go past the three days?
So as a practical matter, Sonia, someone could complain to the Commissioner and say that they should accept your documents at that time, and that, you know, they could try to get in order to compel you to do something if you're required by law to do it. If it happens on the fourth day, it doesn't necessarily mean that what you've done is invalid. You are supposed to do it by the third day, someone could complain to the Commissioner, they'll have it by the fourth day, but in my opinion, that would not give rise to a determination that what the district said was invalid as far as residency or non-residency. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Doby, and I want to thank you again for putting together this presentation, it was really helpful, and I'm glad to see from a view of the things on your slides, it's different from what I've been doing in our residency policy, so I'm really happy to hear about that. I really took it interesting after our last meeting on March 27, and what I did is, I surveyed nine policies from neighboring districts. I looked at Mayeback, Cornwall, Northtown, Lakeland, Tolu, Lewisboro, Norale, Somers, Fairfield, and Richfield, and compared them to Brewster's, and I'd like to share what I found. Brewster requires the least amount, and lacks specific guidelines on their policy for accepted documentation compared to the survey districts. Brewster requires a total of two documents, while all nine require four to six for verification of residency. Six out of the nine include a statement on their policies regarding Section 21045 of the Pedalaw New York State, which prohibits making a false written statement. Therefore, your statements in your registration application must be true and accurate, and can be checked at any time. Three out of the nine include a statement in their policy that it is determined that if you are not a resident of the school district, you will be liable for payment of tuition. Brewster does not include any clear statements on their policy, but on behalf of the state's affidavit up there. Letting landlords, third parties, and parents know that lying about residency is a crime and has financial consequences. Seven out of the nine increase the documentation needed to prove residency when you are renting or living with a third party. Six out of nine request the third party to prove residency through a deed, tax bill, or mortgage statement, along with two to five additional documents. No lease or proof of ownership is required in or under our current policy, only a notarized letter stating that the family is residing there. Four out of nine require that a renter must submit a signed lease by the tenant and landlord with the landlord's contact information. Three out of nine require the lease to be notarized, and Cornwall requires the lease must be dated within six days, and Lakeland requires that the lease must be dated within 30 days of submission. Brewster requires a signed and original lease with no specifications, and Brewster is the only district that accepts a month-to-month rental situation. Five out of nine districts will not allow any documentation that does not have the person's name and address clearly listed, and any bill submitted must be dated within 30 days. Five out of nine require one to two consecutive utility bills as a mandated document. Brewster does not have any mandated documents listed, and lacks specific guidelines for their acceptable paperwork. Lakeland has it clearly stated that they will not accept a library card, telephone bill, bank statement, W. Credit card or a card loan statement is proof of residency, it is clearly written on their policy. Brewster, along with two out of nine districts, lists a library card as an acceptable form of documentation. However, those two surveyed districts require two additional pieces of paperwork for verification. The Brewster library only requires one form of identification to issue a card, and they will accept any bill or ID as long as it includes a name and a Brewster address, it does not have to be a photo ID. The criteria to obtain a Brewster library card lacks the substance to validate residency. Under Brewster's current published policy, a parent has the ability to legally prove residency with only two forms of documentation, and following their guidelines, a person can verify residency with a month-to-month rent agreement and a library card if they choose to. Compared to the nine neighboring districts, we have the weakest policy and are the most susceptible to residency fraud. Our guidelines are vague, and any individual that was denied residency would be able to challenge the decision easily. Brewster needs strong residency guidelines to ensure the safety of our students, as seen in a recent incident in Rochelle. Through my survey, I found that Lakeland has the strongest and most specific guidelines out of all the nine neighboring districts, and would be a policy that should be examined and used as a model. I am requesting that the Board of Education and Dr. Henry Edmond create a system with the registrar to put in place the toughest policies and practices that is permissible in New York State to halt and deter residency fraud, protect our students, and take the financial burden off the taxpayers and the district. With the yearly cost per pupil and a proposed budget being close to $30,000, it would benefit our district financially to stop the ability to commit residency fraud. In order to accomplish this, our proof of residency needs to be revised and restructured using a comparison of neighboring districts and a task force that consists of community members. Thank you very much. And I think that this question, how the revised proof of residency be presented and discussed on an upcoming agenda. I have created a comparison chart with the information from all the survey that I did, and I would be more than happy to share it with all of you. You know, we're supposed to educate every child, and I will be wholeheartedly in that, but the one thing that we think they have to prove that they live here, and I think our guidelines really need to be looked at, they need to be specific, they need to be restructured, and if other districts can do this, I really think that we really need to take the time and do this.
One of the things that the Board of Education can do is write policies, but in writing the policy that you're suggesting, we're gonna have to defer and understand, are these other districts in fact compliant with New York State law? So, we can only, we can only contrast what Brewster does, we can certainly take all parents' good work and homework, and take them, take them all the time and looking at it, but a couple of things, just a couple of specific things, just on the legal stuff, and Victor will speak to the practical stuff. The library card, the district's policy, the way I read it, doesn't say, show us the library card and you'll let us in. It's one type of proof that may or may not be acceptable in conjunction with other things, so it's not as simple as that, number one. Number two, in my opinion, you cannot simply say to someone who is a tenant, if you don't get an affidavit from your landlord, we're not gonna let you in. In my opinion, because, because if the landlord doesn't want to sign it, or swear to it, or you don't have any legal right to compel your landlord to do anything. If the person is still here, and still residing here, in my opinion, we don't have the right to keep that person out, you may have to investigate it a different way. So when you see two types of residence, proof, or 12, it's really not as much about how many types you accept, it's really what the best proof is. So having two or four or 12, you could spend a list of 20 things that are acceptable, then, actually that's broadening what you're gonna accept. What it comes down to is, you have to determine on a case-by-case basis if someone's a resident. They may be living there with the landlord illegally, they may not have a lease, they still have the right to go to school here, if we can establish our satisfaction that they are a resident. As far as the other stuff, actually, when the district goes to the Commissioner of Education, and there's an appeal, where we say this person isn't a resident, if the Commissioner grants a stay and lets the person in, and this does happen, what the Commissioner will say is, I will let you stay, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, and Johnny, continue to go to school here, but if the district is right, and you're not really a resident, they can sue you for the tuition. So that notice actually comes from the Commissioner, and I think there is talk about putting that on the district website in addition. And I think there is talk about putting that on the district website in addition. That's perfectly acceptable. As far as the statements about the Pedo Law, that's actually something, you know, if you want to join the task force, that's probably a good idea. Nothing wrong with saying that. If the person says something false, they're filing a false instrument, but some districts do that. And I agree with you that there's nothing wrong with doing that on the application. Yeah. Yeah. No doubt. But as to the other stuff, saying you can only present this type of proof or we aren't going to let you in, you can't say that, because you have to look at everyone on an individual basis. Someone might not have a driver's license, they might not have a lease they want to have to eat, but they still may be living here, and we have to address that question.
That's not, that's not her point. So, the point is...
I'd like to hear the response to the rest of the question.
No, no, he understands. That's the world lined up. That man's a priceless head.
I have a question, actually, with the woman you mentioned, so it's part of this conversation. I just want to clarify, what is the point of this? Is it, one, getting education for the kids and disenrollment for kids who don't qualify? Is it safe for our students, who we all know are real residents here? Or is it, we don't want Brewster labels as a, as a community that's, I don't know, unhealthy or whatever? Now, I don't want Brewster label. It reduces my popularity. But I also want children to be educated. So, what's the real purpose of our dissection? What are we trying to do? What are we trying to achieve?
The legal answer is, there's two things. On the one end, it would be a gift of public funds for the district to allow people who they know don't actually live here to attend school without paying tuition. That's the one thing. So, you have to, you can't let people in who aren't residents in the district who aren't qualified. At the other end, you can't discriminate against people because they, you know, you suspect that you can't prove that they're not residents. If they, they need the test, even if they don't have, even if they don't have, you know, something on the list, they'll have to look at whether or not they're physically present here and they are, they intend to remain. I think that's something...
All of these, all of these recommendations, I think, are greatly valid. We should absolutely investigate them. You know, we are, you know, we are anxious to create a residency task force that we can, you know, open this conversation up and, you know, productively look into each of these different issues. So, I encourage you, if, you know, if you are interested, please email our district registrar. We will establish this task force, and we will look into each of those recommendations. Again, keeping in mind that, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing everything and complying with the state and federal laws, which are, you know, extremely complicated. But, you know, we can certainly look into, you know, each of these different recommendations. And we should do that in the form of a task force that we're targeted, and we make sure that we truly what we're still going to do.
That's right. So, seven of Karen's schools were New York State. So, the first thing I would say as part of our task force is I think we need to consult Lakeland's lawyer to be able to say, if seven schools are able to do that... What I want to talk about is, you're right, you can't just ask for a lease. You can't just ask for a deed. But according to New York State law, they give an example that is not intended to be exhaustive, nor is it a list of requirements. Pay stub, income tax form, deed or lease to a house or apartment, utility and other bills sent to the student's home address, membership documents such as a library card, voter registration document, official driver's license, driver's pitch, blah, 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 state or other government issued ID. Brewster has picked these easiest ones up and has put them forth as our requirements, where all these other schools have actually gone and done a much more stricter job and protected their assets. You asked us on March 27th, Dr. Danmore, to be possessive and proud about our district. That's what we wanted. But I am asking tonight, because when you ask for proof of residency, it's not discriminatory. I'll show up at the district building tomorrow with five pieces of information. To actually do a residency audit that should be completed by the start of the school year. Now, I know that tonight we'll probably also going to talk about the budget and the budget cuts. But let me give you a couple of examples. We, we had this disagreement last week. The budget's ninety-nine million, proposed budget's ninety-nine million. We have 3,088 students. If you divide that into it, you get a cost per pupil of $32,000. If we just have twenty students, that's roughly over $800,000. Now, I know if you usher twenty students out, you don't all of a sudden have $800,000 put in your bank account. But I do know, when last time we were here and we cut thirteen positions arbitrarily just because they had resignations, we could actually say, maybe there's lower enrollment now. Maybe there's some flexibility that we could do. So, when we think about the cost of an audit, I'm certain that the community, and we can ask someone to volunteer, to come and get paid $15,000 to help the registrar do an audit. Because we have paid astronomical amounts to consultants and paying out for... We always talk, every time anyone brings up residency fraud, we talk about the fact that the investigators are so expensive. Last time we were here, we talked about a retired police officer filling the SRO vacancy that we wanted in, in this building? In the C D Star for $37,000 a year. And that person would have no benefits because they're retired, they're already getting the benefits. Let's add an investigator that's a retired officer, because guess what? I could probably find fifteen of them in here, because that's what our community is. Look at Westchester, there is a reason we don't live there. My house down in, where I worked down and purchased, would probably go for about $2 million, and I pay $55,000 in taxes. That's not why we live there. We can't afford that. So, everybody lives up here, but we have to put our kids through school. We can't support everyone else's children. Yes. Beyond the new procedures, we need a much more set of residencies. So, I love the new procedures. Thank you for that work. Thank you for considering our request for a task force. I went on the requirements yesterday. The requirements are the same. Two limcy requirements. I could walk in there with a month-to-month lease that does not show intent to stay, and a library card that does not show this. So, before I wrap up, we've talked a lot about McKinney-Vento. I keep hearing a push on the homeless. We checked with the Deputy Commissioner of Social Services of Putnam County to understand how many homeless that we have. I did ask that, and then April 14th, we now haven't received a response. How many students do we have that are homeless? According to Putnam County, we only have one, and they do not live within our district. Two other points that I want to make is that I still hear that there are registrations happening in JFK. So, I do understand that the registrar's relatively new, but we need to make certain that there's no, there's no outside of registrar registrations. Have to go there. You know, there should be no reason for that happening. And my last comment, this question for the lawyer, is you talked about the transfer care, custody, a parent could transfer the care and custody and control of students to a guardian. Is that a legal transfer? Or can I just say, "Oh, I'm just giving her to my neighbor," and she's going to say that shit?
So, good question. Let me ask a question if I can. And you don't have to take it at my word. You can contact the Commissioner of Education. They actually have forms for it. So, you don't have to go to court to get legal guardianship. Brewster says that. There's a lot of cases. What you have to do is have affidavits, which means you're swearing under penalty of perjury, that it's true, which means you can be prosecuted, saying, "I choose to run and get care, custody, and control of my child to my sister who lives in Brewster, and I relinquish all day-to-day decision-making power." So, they can call her if she's got a discipline problem, or go to the CSE, ask them to pull her out of school. And she's assumed the financial responsibility, meaning usually she's taken on his insurance policy, and she's supported. So, it's a pretty weighty matter. Even if you don't have to go to court, like the Commissioner says, you get legal guardianship. So, the Commissioner would accept it as legal with those affidavits. He clearly says that. Chief clearly says that. Forgive me. And you don't have to go to court to get legal guardianship.
Right. Thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
I just have two quick questions. They're very specific, though. I'm glad to see there are new procedures, and that you're listening to the community, because really, you do need to get more strict. But I guess, one of my questions is, why do you need a student's full name in order to open an investigation? When we're the eyes and ears of this community, we all see the bus stops with the Connecticut plates. I'm sure you don't, but we all do. Is my husband really, like he was told by the registrar, the district registrar, is my husband really supposed to question a seven-year-old getting off the bus? Hey, what's your name? I need your name. Do you know why? Because she doesn't live up the road. We know it. The Connecticut car picking her up. That Karen knows it. But the district can't do anything until somebody gives them a name? You really want my husband to ask that? Is that not appropriate?
In order for, again, following the procedures that are established, we need to make sure that we communicate to the parents that there's an issue concerning residency.
Where are you sending these letters if they don't live there?
So, as a matter of practicality, we're sending it to the address that they've listed, that they're saying, that they're saying that they live there. One of, one of the, you know, what becomes an item of fact would be, if a letter is delivered there, or a letter is sent certified mail and it's returned. Meaning, that's evidence right there that they don't live there. But again, making sure that we're, you know, building our case, you know, for making a determination, we need to know the child's name. And, you know, just getting a random tip that I saw a car drop off a student, that, we need more than that to act on. So, when we get those calls, we'll then reach out to, say, Transportation or the main office to get information from the monitor. Did you see a student get dropped off? In that case, the monitor may be able to say, "Yeah, I recognize that student. Here's the student's name." And then we can proceed. But to get a, you know, a random call that I saw, you know, a car drop off, that's not sufficient for us to move on that. That will prompt us to make another call, and oftentimes, our first call will be to Transportation. You know, so this student, you know, a report is made that, you know, this student may not be a resident. We'll first reach out to Transportation. Is this child being picked up and dropped off at the address that they say they do? That's one of the, you know, one of the first inquiries that we make. But again, we need more specific information in order to begin an investigation. While, you know, a tip that, you know, we saw a kid get picked up or dropped off with Connecticut plates, that's not enough at that point. However, we will then reach out to the buildings to find out more information.
I don't understand. It's not just one time. If somebody calls, I understand they're saying, oh, well, they just got picked up today. But if it happens every day, how can it not be a threshold to act on? It can't be either you have a name or nothing. Can you also send a letter home in the kid's backpack instead of mailing it to a place they don't live?
So, the question, where do you send the letter, is a good question. It comes up a lot. When there's an investigator and we think that the person is actually going home to someplace other than Brewster every night, we actually recommend to the district that they send the letter to both places. The apparent address in Brewster and the address where we think they're actually living.
How do you know where they're actually living?
Like I said. Yeah. Well, we hire an investigator. And when the district does that, and they think they know that the student is going home to some other district every night, the letter is actually sent to both places. That's a fair point.
Can I ask how many investigations we did this year?
So, you know, this, this isn't something that, you know, we...
I imagine it's costly, so I imagine...
Well, obviously, it's not costly to send a letter. And we went through our files for this year. And so, this year, we've had six inquiries leading to one hearing and one determination. In 1617, we had fourteen inquiries leading to two hearings and two determinations. In 1516, we had sixteen inquiries, four hearings, and two determinations. And when I say inquiry, it means that we've sent a letter out saying, you know, "We're questioning your residency. You need to submit proof." When I say a hearing, it means that they didn't submit sufficient proof, which led to a hearing, which is their final opportunity to provide more documentation. And again, every step of the way, we're consulting with our attorneys and sometimes soliciting a private investigator to help us fill these cases. And when I say determination, that means that the family, when the number's two, these are the families, and maybe more than one student in each family, that means that we've disenrolled that family.
So, how many were disenrolled this year?
So, one family was disenrolled this year, and I believe there were two students.
Are they being prosecuted, those parents? Are we suing them for the services that they receive? They're paying for it. If we're going to put, if there's a law, shouldn't we follow it? Shouldn't we make, like, some kind of statement that Brewster is going to really prosecute people if they break the law?
So, two things. Prosecution is, you have to be able to show a crime was committed. And I'm not familiar with that case, so I don't know if there's any information regarding that. As far as suing someone, you have, the district has to make a business judgment. It has to look at the cost of how much tuition was, how much the tuition was, and how much it's going to cost for the lawsuit. And they have a lot to do that if they want to do it.
But I mean to make a point.
I make a point?
To make a point. Isn't it worth one prosecution?
It's going places now, okay? Let's go back to before that. Question, answer, question, answer. Dialogues, the same time, not working. The lady in the booth is actually waiting patiently. I'm sure it's her turn.
I just have a secret question. Because of policies, you brought up that when people, when children all use the same address, it's flagged. So, I'd like to know what our policy is for follow-up when it's flagged that someone keeps using the same address. So many children.
So, again, a lot of these procedures are new procedures that we just have placed. Our district registrar just came into effect beginning in January. So, the process was disjointed when it was handled at each of the buildings. Not to say that they didn't do a good job. They did do a good job. But now that we have a cohesive central point, a district registrar, this person's primary, this person's primary focus is on residency. And we are just beginning these processes that we've put into place here. So, while we've run these duplicate annual searches, we've sent out those inquiries. So, those are in process today. I can say that.
So, I, over the last couple of months, I've spent a lot of time on the phone with registrars. And it was actually kind of funny. Most of my time was spent trying to convince them that I wasn't trying to sneak into their district asking these questions. But one of their tools that they used for detecting residency fraud was their transportation department. So, if a bus driver noticed something unusual, they would record it, and that would, that would be an investigation that would be because of that reporting. What is our protocol with transportation? So, if a bus driver sees a child being dropped off by taxi, or if they know that, you know, there are plenty of neighborhoods... I mean, this is a small town. We, we know each other. So, if a child, that bus driver could be my neighbor. So, if he knows that he's picking up the same, at the same spot every day, that kid doesn't live there, what's your protocol? He comes to you and says, "Hey, listen, that child doesn't live at this bus stop."
That's actually how the majority of our tips come in, from our transportation department.
So, if I, so if I ask, if I ask the bus driver if there is a protocol set up, if they're encouraged to come forward with tips, they're going to tell me yes?
I can't confirm. I'm sitting here a little bit.
Because you know why I'm asking that question, right? Okay. Because we know that they've been discouraged from reporting. So, that's why I'm asking. Perhaps a protocol setting up to detect these problems would be helpful. They don't even know who to report it to.
Okay. Well, that's absolutely a concern of ours. We're going to pay attention and make sure that we, you know, reach out to our staff and let them know that they should not be discouraged. Of course, we're not familiar with that.
So, on March 27th, after our meeting, we saw your presentation, and we were told that there were protocols in place, that all staff have been educated on these protocols. In my email to you following that meeting, I asked to see those protocols. We haven't received them. You know us by now. Every time you say something, I go to Chamee, she goes someplace, I go talk to the county. We talk to everybody. That's what we're doing. And so, what have I done? I've talked to about forty staff, bus drivers, teachers, and said, "What's your protocol? Have you ever received an email? Have you ever received a training?" Nothing. It's cricket, or, as she said, in times, they've been discouraged. "Oh, you know, don't worry about it." I, because I talked to a lot of people, just got a text that says there's a four-inch pile of returned letters from JFK.
pile of returned letters from JFK. So that's a problem that we have. A business owner down in the village say, I call the district time and time again, because I keep getting all of the mail from students that say that they live there. So part of this task force, you know, we want a hell of a lot more accountability than we have seen. We are a sieve for everyone. And we talk about the Connecticut plates, it's not, oh, just Connecticut, it's Carmel, it's Somers. Tell your kids to go have their friends do a location search. Everybody pops up in different locations. This is an enormous problem, and when we go up in a budget, $10 million over two years, we have to look for accountability on who is attending our schools when we're the weakest link in the chain.
A question about the person who interviewed the bus drivers, who did they tell you, I mean, who did they mention that influenced them not to report?
It's a general discouragement that they feel that they don't have any place to go with the information, and it's not, it's not brought forward in a way. So these are the end, and there's no protocol that's in place where they're encouraged children to work sufficiently, or sufficient jobs. And not only are there a point in the district that does not investigate taxi drop-offs, because they have to follow up if they're dropped off, and a bus driver.
Victor, can I get the numbers again for the investigations, year by year?
So again, we're not required to keep down on this, so this was our best effort to go through all of our files. Well, I want to be honest, because this is not, when we perform an investigation, we create a file for the family, not a file by year. So what we did was go through all of our files, which range, you know, back a half dozen years. So we've had 16 inquiries, in 1516, we've had 16 inquiries, four hearings, resulting in two determinations. In 1617, we had 14 inquiries, resulting in two hearings and two determinations. For the current year-to-date, we've had six inquiries, resulting in one hearing and one determination.
So can you explain to the audience why the inquiries went down year over year? Why we're not, what determines the investigation? Why are we at six when we're at 16?
Well, it's year-to-date, and these are, it's variable.
Yeah, it's May, so it's pretty, it's pretty close to the end of the year.
And I don't know if that can be consistent. It's when we receive a tip or we perform an investigation, it comes to us. It's not, you know, it's not something that we've been...
So can you tell the audience how to deliver a tip? Because we've just told them.
Absolutely.
Because 16 inquiries we've done last year, and only six this year, so apparently, we just don't know how to report it properly. Connecticut license plates are not, are not the route we go.
Right, so we email the, again, district registrar, and, you know, report the information that you have. It's important that you note the, you know, the student name, because that's how we're able to. But if you're unable to report a student name, and you can report an incident, like, for example, a car being dropped off at CB Star, that will then prompt our registrar to reach out to the building and try to get more information. Have you, have you seen, you know, a car drop off, a student with Connecticut plates? And then we'll gather more information, hopefully from the staff member, we'll be able to get the name of the student to continue the investigation.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to touch base here on the bus drivers not feeling they could reach out to the administration. I want to let you know, I'm running for the school board, and I received 70 signatures on my petition. I want to let you know that 10 employees of this school district that I've known my entire life would not sign my petition out of fear of retaliation from the school board and the administration. So if you guys could all sit up there with your big wide eyes, and I think nothing's going on, with the word on the street, it's a very retaliatory administration here. Make that point to them. I will see you on May 15.
We have a lot of Connecticut plates, and we, as a small community, we know what kids get on, what bus stop, where they live. Because I know little Chris across the street, if his parents ain't there, I'm there to make sure little Chris gets home. Or if little Chris sits at my house. We know everybody, where they sit. So if you put up, say to us that we don't know if they're border jumper by Connecticut plates, and you just said that we need a name to follow up and do an investigation, again, I'm not gonna go ask little Chris, hey, what's your name? What's your last name? So that I can report it to you. I'm giving you the information, telling you that there is a Connecticut plate sitting at Pot Ridge and Havilook Drive. There's another Connecticut plate sitting at Dinn and Havilook Drive with Connecticut plates, and I know that they don't live in my area, because I know who lives within my block range here, within a couple of miles. That's what we're telling you. We know who lives within a mile radius, and who gets on what bus. Stop paying attention.
So thank you, and I just want to, I just want to say that, you know, we do appreciate the feedback, and, you know, through this task force, we hope that we're gonna continue to improve the procedures that we've put in place. Obviously, we've put some in place, and we have a little bit of ways to go. So I do thank you for all of your feedback. I encourage you to join our task force, and we'll continue this conversation.
Hi, I would just like to say one thing. I know I've heard a lot about the word on the street. I've seen rumors fly like it wouldn't believe. Are we sure that this word on the street is accurate? Because I've seen in this town rumors that get really twisted and that that change. So I just want to make sure for my purposes. And then the other thing is, this investigation, what would it cost the district if, God forbid, we did something wrong, you know, that violates the state protocol, and we got a violation? What would happen? We've got to be careful. We can't take chances. So I'm just curious as to what would happen there? The legal ramifications of it?
So what would happen is, there could be an investigation by the Attorney General, which could result in consent, or like we did in 22 school districts in Orange and around other places. There could be a civil rights lawsuit, which is very expensive, including attorney's fees, not just the district's fees, but you have to pay the fees for the civil rights lawyer suing the district. And there could be an investigation by the Office for Civil Rights in Department of Justice, which is very serious, obviously, and very expensive, and very time-consuming for the district. And that's just some of the things that could happen if there were an investigation without credible allegation that there was any systemic violation of people's rights when trying to register. And that's basically it.
Okay. So it's not that we're lax, it's that we want to be careful on how we do this. Because I don't think I'd want to see the Brewster School District, you know, headlining and inspaning, that we discriminated and we violated the state protocol. I mean, that to me would be worse, and probably more costly violations.
If you had six forms of IP, you wouldn't have to be investigated. There you go.
So taking a moment to title one. Okay. Evening everyone, my name is Michelle Gash, from the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Part of my role is to oversee what we call the federal consolidated grants. So that comprises Title I, II, and III. So tonight, you know, I'll speak a little bit about Titles II and III when we talk about the big picture and federal funding. But the plan is to sort of take a deep dive of Title I, provide an overview of the program, hopefully provide some context for how this funding is viewed regionally and throughout the state. And then get down to our approach here in Brewster. What are the knockboulds? How do we spend, how do we spend our money here? So two things before we get started. First is, I know a number of you have done an extensive amount of research behind Title I, so if some of this is repetitive, I apologize in advance, but I think it's important for us all to have a common working knowledge of Title I. The second piece is, I tried to do for each of the slides, is to give a source as to where I found this information. So could be a website, could be a webinar, could be a phone or email communication, but I just wanted to put that on there in case you wanted to follow up. Okay, so the main point I wanted to start with, that you'll see that I reiterate throughout the presentation at several points tonight, is that Title I funding is not just for, quote unquote, core districts, okay? It's also not just for low-income students, or students that come from low-income backgrounds. Throughout this research and getting prepared for this presentation, what we actually discovered was that over 99% of lead educational agencies, that's synonymous with districts in this case, over 99% of lead educational agencies receive Title I funding in order to supplement their existing educational program. So again, Title I, I'm sorry, the federal consolidated grant comprises these three parts. Now see, there are subcomponents under, under some of these. Title I, Part A, is the bulk of the Title I grant, and that is, read it, improving basic programs operated by lead educational agencies. Title I, Part A, is a reserve, it's a homeless set-aside grant, and I'll get into more detail about what that is and how it's used. Title I, Part D, is for neglected and delinquent programs. That's state and federal terminology, not ours. For your, just for your knowledge, we also receive Title II and Title III funding. Title II is for professional learning. And Title III, there are many subsets under Title III, for English as a new language learners and students. So here's our, the definition of Title I, Part A, and this comes right from the federal site. It was initially enacted in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965. It has been renewed, that Elementary Education, ESEA, has been renewed six times, most recently with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And it was initially enacted in the 1960s during President Lyndon Johnson, the War on Poverty, in order to provide supplemental educational funding to help students improve academic outcomes. Okay, so even though the allocation is based on poverty or wealth, the idea, and this was reiterated in numerous conversations that I've had with a gentleman at the Title I, New York State Title I Office, the intent is to, is to improve educational outcomes for all students, which is part of why, when we get to how we allocate the funds and how we designated our schools, part of why we designated it that way. The homeless set-aside portion, again, this is a reserve. So this is not additional money, but within our federal grant, we, in the budget that we proposed to New York State, we are required to set aside a certain amount of monies. So this is to be used for what they call necessary, any materials, we're talking about really basic materials here, so necessary for students to be able to participate in general education programs. Could be as simple as a backpack, could be clothes, depending on what this is. And the idea with this reserve is that it's only to be used when all other funding sources have been expensed, okay? So that could be PTA, that could be public, whatever it happens to be, this is sort of like a last, a last resort. And Miss Galan, I know you mentioned that there was, Putnam County reported, there was one student who was considered homeless. If you don't mind, I'll reach out to you tomorrow and get the contact information of that person, because in our system, what we have currently, is we, under the Ukevento regulations, we currently have 15 students, okay? So I would love to figure out and reconcile that, and hopefully make sure I do that tomorrow morning. So just so you know for your identification, I oversold the grants last year for 1617, we also set aside $2,000. None of those funds were used, they were rolled over into this year, and up to this point, we have not utilized these funds yet. Not to say that we couldn't, by all circumstances, but that's the status currently of our homeless set-aside portion. The third part of Title I is Part D. Again, this, this is the terminology that's produced by the federal and state governments, neglected and delinquent institutions. Basically, these are first state-run institutions, adult correctional institutions. We did not receive any Title I, Part D funding, because we do not have institutions that qualify within our boundaries, within our impacted areas. Some other Title I facts, which I mentioned somewhat, the big piece, and again, the gentleman at the Title I Office could not emphasize this enough, this is not just about helping low-income students, it's about helping all students. And again, when we get into why we designated JFK and CB Star as school-wide programs, we'll talk about how those funds could be used more flexibly if we have that philosophy and that approach. So this is another key piece with Title I funding, these are supplemental services. So as much as we would love to be able to use it to say, you know, we would love to put another teacher, a collection teacher maybe in JFK or CB Star, we can't use it to that purpose, it has to be non-core, non-core funding. Okay, so how is our allocation determined? So basically, the money filters down from the federal government to the state government to districts, right? That makes sense. So what the federal government does is they use the federal census poverty data, okay? So this is data that's two years behind, and they create some kind of algorithm that then determines our, our federal allocation. Once that allocation is made, it's given to the states, almost holding trust, it's then our, the state in mid-July, end of July usually tells us what our federal allocation is, and then we then have to turn around and say, okay, here's how we plan to use these funds for supplemental services across, across our district. So again, this is something that we would, would love to be able to clear up. The Title I allocation has nothing to do with free and reduced lunch, the amount of money that we receive from the federal government has nothing to do with the amount, with the free and reduced lunch data that we report to the state. Okay, so even though the data is two years behind in terms of our federal allocations, it never is reported back up to the federal government for the purposes of determining our Title I funding, okay? The, and again, I notify, I mentioned this, but it's two years, our funding is two years behind what this census data is. And this is probably information we don't care to know, but we all know about the census data, you know, census that happens every 10 years. There's actually an annual survey that's called the American Community Survey, that is given to 1% of the population in a particular area. And what happens is, that sample is an extrapolated out, reported to the federal government, two years later, we end up getting an allocation based on that particular, or on that, on that census data. Okay, so if we don't use free and reduced lunch data, but not, if that doesn't determine the amount of funding that we receive, what is it, what is it used for? And the answer is, it's used as part of a guide for how we make decisions about how we allocate the funds. So this is one piece of the bigger picture. So if we know, for example, that we may have more students in need just based on free and reduced lunch data, we also then need to look at our priorities for the district and what's coming up for the upcoming school year. Need to look at our resources and where our resources are currently allocated, and then identify the needs, and then fund, use these supplemental funds in order to support that information. So it's not like we hit a certain point and it automatically triggers something, and then we have to do X, Y, and Z. There are pretty prescriptive questions, as you can imagine, in the grant when you apply in the summer. You know, one question that comes to mind is, are you skipping over any school that may have 75% poverty data, or 75% free and reduced lunch data? We're not close to that, so of course, we answer no, but there might be certain things, there may be certain additional justifications that we might need to provide at that point, but, you know, this is, free and reduced lunch data is one piece of the bigger picture in terms of decision-making that helps us figure out how we allocate, allocate our funds. So this is another thing that we heard, and thank you for the opportunity to, to talk more about it. We are not a Title I district. Okay, I know that has, has been going around. And so I called the state again to find out more information about this, and they, just so you know, were unaware that there was such a designation as a Title I, of a Title I district. So I'm not sure, because this gentleman was sick of me calling him so much, but he wrote a letter, I won't read the whole thing to you, but he basically says that, writing to regard, writing to you regarding your inquiry about whether state ed departments have a designation of Title I district, there is no such designation. If there were, practically all the school districts in New York State would carry such a designation. As I have explained to you over the phone in an email, over 99% of all public and charter LEAs, or lead educational agencies, in New York State receive Title I allocation. Out of 733 public school districts in New York, only two do not receive Title I funding for the 2017-18 school year. And the reason these two did not receive funding was because of their size and not because of their poverty. So where some of the terminology might get, might get mixed here is, is because 99% of school districts have to, or not have to, 99% of school districts accept Title I funding, once you receive that funding, you need to designate either all the schools in your district, or one school, or any combination of that, as targeted assistance or schoolwide. What we did for this school year is we targeted JFK and CB Star as school-wide programs, because again, it gives more flexibility in how we can use these supplemental funds. Okay, I'll get into more details about that. You know, Mr. Carlson and Mrs. Ash spoke about this already, but these are the percentages that we report... But these are the percentages that we reported to New York State in our grant this August. We had 41% of the school at JFK, free and reduced lunch rate, 35% at C B Star. And these two schools is a part of the reason, but not all of the reasons, why we designated these two schools as school-wide programs. Okay, all right. So as I mentioned, anytime that you accept Title I funding, it's the job of the lead educational agency, or the district in this case, to decide how these funds are going to be allocated. So one option is to go targeted assistance. So you have, you know, the Title I program, right? You have teachers that maybe part of their salary is funded through Title I funds. And all the funds really need to be funneled into what you've identified as an area of focus for that particular school, or multiple schools within a district. We went with the second option, which was school-wide. Again, no particular percentage ended up triggering this necessarily. It did factor into the decision-making, but school-wide, it gives us flexibility. So the idea is that it's not just students who may qualify as academically in need, but it's all students in that building could receive some of the funding, whether it be through contact with a professional, or through the amount, or the type of professional learning that is provided to the staff. So again, we have, we designated C B Star and JFK as school-wide programs so that we could have that additional flexibility. So what does that flexibility look like? Well, first, we know that we want to focus on literacy. A bulk of what you'll see through our Title I funding is in professional salaries. And we pay for half of the salary of four reading teachers across C B Star and JFK. So that's the bulk of our funding. Again, I can't emphasize enough, a school-wide approach allows us to utilize the funds, they still think supplemental, but utilize the funds so that their services and professional learning can go to all students, or all students and staff members in that particular school. And if you talk to any educator, they will let you know that early intervention is the way to go. The quicker that we can get students' readings learned, not just learning to read, the better off they will be as they progress on their academic career. So this is all part of the rationale and the decision-making that went into using the funds this way. So you may ask, well, how did this, is this a new thing? How have we done this in the past? So we went back to the 2010, 2010-11 school year. We've been receiving Title I funds for a very long time. But again, anytime you receive those funds, it's your, you need to designate and tell the state exactly how you're going to plan, or how you're planning to use those funds. So the last two years, we have JFK and C B Star in school-wide programs. You've seen 14, 15, and 15, 16, all four schools are part of the school-wide program, and you can read. It varies each year, again, depending on the priority, the resources, and the needs of the district. Here's a picture of our Title I funding going back to 2007, 2008. What you see is, you know, in the first two years, on the left, 2007, 2008, 2008, 2009, that's where we're at, height of Title I funding. We received about $450,000 in 2007, in 2008, 2009, about $452,000. This year, we have received $357,000, that's including our rollover amount. Just, again, for some regional perspective, I contacted my colleagues across the county and asked them how they, once they receive these funds, or once they know about their allocations, how do they designate their programs? Putnam Valley Elementary School and the Middle School, our school-wide programs. Carmel, all four elementary, oh, I'm sorry, all their elementary schools, and their middle school. And Mayack Elementary, and all of their elementary schools. There's a link here, the most recent data that the school, that the state has up, goes back to 15, 16, about school-wide programs, there were over 200, 2,200 schools that were designated as school-wide programs. And again, just to give you, and hopefully reiterate, the idea that this is not just for, you know, high-poverty districts. Firemills use, all four of their schools were designated as school-wide programs. Pelham, two of their schools, in the 2015-16 school year, are school-wide programs. Weinberg, two of their schools, school-wide programs. Because, again, it gives you flexibility to how you can, how you can use these funds. All right, Title I funding gives, again, a lot of information. But here is the funding throughout the county. Again, you remember from the letter that the gentleman from the Title I office wrote, size, and, and how we raised from two years ago, impact, the amount of funding that is received. And this is what we had for this particular school year. This link at the bottom of the presentation, which is online, will lead you to a page where you can break down by counties, I'm sure many of you have seen it. And you can go to any school district, and this way you can find out what their Title I allocation is for this year. Firemills, a little over $50,000. Chapua, just a little over $250,000. North Salem, it's 230,000, you can read that. But again, 99% of lead educational agencies utilize these funds for supplemental services. I know that Chapua has two targeted assistance schools in their elementary schools. North Salem uses a school-wide program, according to the Assistance Superintendent spoke with today. Rye, targeting assistance. So again, school districts look at their needs and priorities and their resources in order to determine how they use these supplemental funds. All right, so Brewster as a lead educational agency. So we're responsible for private schools within our boundaries, as well as making sure that any Brewster center that's a residence would tend private schools outside of our boundaries, that they, if they qualify for free and reduced lunch, that they would receive some funding as well. So the state receives this from the federal government, they give it to us almost holding guardianship for then us to consult with these schools about how these funds can be used. So this is what we have received for this year. This $357,000, that includes our rollover amount, $3,000 and change from last year. And here you can see the breakdown with Title II, and two subcomponents of Title III. Five chart is just a breakdown of the amount of federal funding that we receive for, that we receive this year, in 17-18. And this, again, includes private schools and rollover amounts. Okay, so how does it compare from this year to last year? And this fluctuates every year, which is, again, why we have to, why it needs to be supplemental in nature. Because even in the middle of last year, we had a correction and lost about $10,000 in federal funding. So, from Title I, actually. So we have about $1,500 difference, but again, if you count in that $10,000, that was removed in the middle of the year. We're about $11,000 down from the previous school year. Title II, we have increased this year, but we've been told, just so you know, that the federal funding formulas have changed. And next year, we can expect less Title II money. And we stay about the same for Title III. So, private schools within our boundaries, we know we have Green Chimneys and Longview. So this is where, what I was speaking to before, I was telling you about the residential students. So there are, even though there are residential students who are at Green Chimneys in Ulster, Orange, Suffolk, Dutchess Counties, they count as residents if they stay at Green Chimneys. So the wonderful people there, we consult with them in the summer and talk about how they can use the funds. But this goes, this factors into the formula about how much funding they'll receive in Title I and Title II. Longview, we had three Brewster residents who qualified as low-income and attended school. So again, they get a certain allocation based on per pupil formula. Another requirement by the government is that it's important that, again, for Brewster residents who attend private schools outside of our boundaries, they are also entitled to Title I funds. So we canvassed 15 K-5 schools, and because we have school-wide programs at JFK and C B Star, it was all of the, all of the Brewster residents that attended these private schools. We had to speak to every headmaster, principal, to find out whether or not they had the students who qualified. Eight schools responded, and one student qualified. All right, so what portion of our allocation was private schools? About $34,000, it's $33,900. And so that represents about 9.5% of our total funding, Title I funding. All right, now let's get into Brewster. So this is how we had spent our money for this school year. For, and again, these are all of the title grants that are within these federal consolidated grants. Again, here's our five chart broken down by the amount of just Brewster funding that we have to be able to spend for supplemental services throughout the district. So this is how we have allocated our funds, our Title I funds. Now just zeroing in back down to Title I. It's how we have allocated our Title I funds for this school year. As you can see, 83% is in professional salaries. And again, that is paid, that pays for half of four reading teachers across the two elementary schools, JFK and C B Star. We have 6.7% purchase services. We already said about 9% goes to private schools, and 0.6% in supplies. So there's a link here that describes in more detail how these funds need to be used. But basically, the overarching premise is that they have to be supplemental, even though they must be allowable, reasonable, and necessary. And that they have to improve either the quantity or quality of education. And again, we have that homeless reserve that is set aside in there as well. Okay, so allowable expenses, academic support for average students, and where bulk of our money does go. Another key piece is in professional learning, which, again, we can use school-wide because we have our school-wide designation. So here is the breakdown for the professional salaries aspect, the 83% of our Title I funding. This top line represents half the salary for reading teachers. We also have our ENL coordinator, which is in Title I grant. We have also used professional salary component on our Title I funding for professional learning, such as, so this is, this isn't, this is paid to teachers who are working outside of their contractual day or year. So the date is what we have spent. And this could be new educator trainings at the building or district level. It could be, there was some fabulous words-of-way training given by JFK teachers earlier in the year. That money would pay for that piece, that this part of it was there. So what's the plan? Because you can see, we have about $22,000 remaining. So this, we are able to use this up to August 31st, and then excess amounts would roll over. But here is our plan. Again, this goes, this is a professional salary component that goes to any, goes to any teacher who might work outside of their contractual day. So we know that we need to have some science training at JFK. So these are all, you know, mixed around in a pot of how this money could be spent. We know that we have a huge hardware in JFK and C B Star, so it makes sense to support that, that technology integration with professional learning. We have, our teachers have done fabulous work, and have worked incredibly hard with Teachers College. Now we need to support them and give them some time horizontally and vertically so that they can work on this alignment. We also have Project Big Learning workshops and Olvea's bullying prevention. Again, this is just a professional salaries piece, they go to arts, they go to, okay? Okay, the next component is purchased services. So this is what we, our, sorry, our spreadsheet, our allocation. So we had an allocation of $57,000, a carryover of $3,300. Private schools received $33,000, $34,000 of that, so we're left with $26,000. We also have a decrease in Title I funds due to change in allocation. So what we will be doing with the remaining amount of this money? So this is what we would use, this is when we would contract with outside individuals, or organizations, or agencies in order to provide some professional learning. Here's some ideas of what we have. So we currently receive a grant through CS4All, Computer Science for All, NYU, and the National Science Foundation to look at our coding and computer science curriculum K-12. So what we need to do, we need to be able to spend some time this summer with someone with a different level of expertise to come in and assist this task force, uh, no, no. Assist this steering committee, this working group, to help move this work forward. We also have some, again, I mentioned science before, so this is a flip side. So this is a teacher salary, this is who we would ask to come in and help provide some professional learning services. We know we need some more support with phonics and word study. We have just identified that at our last professional learning. Ruler, Teachers College, Professional Learning, Olvea's Bullying Prevention. So this is the purchase services component of it that would go towards contracting outside individuals, let's say. And the last piece is our $2,000 reserve, which I talked about several times. Just to give you some historical perspective, this is how the funds were allocated for 2016-17. You should see a lot of familiarity. A bulk is in professional salaries, again, it paid for half of four reading teachers. And 11% in purchase services, which translated to $40,000. That was for Teachers College reading and writing workshop. We, of course, take the private school allocation out, and we have the rollover amount. So this is where I mentioned we have to be flexible and make sure it's supplemental because its funding could change every year, and that's what we see here. So I know there was a lot, but I wanted to, there were some questions that were asked that I wanted to just run through quickly. And we touched on this before. So how could the amount be different? How could we have poverty rate, and I'm not sure exactly what it was, according to the census data, and have different, and this is what I was trying to say without a slide. Was that, you know, the threshold is different, and I just put it in dollars and cents. So you could have the, you know, the federal guideline, which may, the census data show, count a certain percentage, and then you would have more people that would qualify under free and reduced lunch, and as you're saying, because it loses your direction of education as well. Another, some other questions. Does the Title I grant support academic support programs? Yes, that's what we talked about with the salary of reading teachers. English as a New Language Program. So the ENL Steichen coordinator is in this year's grant in Title I. But the majority of any grant, any funding that we receive from Title III is, that's the ENL, English as a New Language Students Grant. The Summer Y Program? No, does not come from Title I. But we did contribute to Y program through Title III and newcomer grants that we received last year, as well as community schools aid allocation. And the PCLC, though, the policy instructors come from registration piece. Sorry, I know this is long, but it's done. Title I and transportation? No, there's no, in the 17-18 grant, there is no allocation for transportation. And, okay, so this is where, just in closing. What we have been doing, there are certain things that we need to do when we receive Title I funds, that we should do, quite frankly. What our K-5 principals have done is they've held, they've integrated the mandatory Title I meetings into their open house presentations. There are also a Title I compact, and I had it posted online, I created a link to it here. And late last year, we adopted a work policy, actually outlined some best practices, which we'll be looking to improve moving forward. So what we're going to do in May is to survey all district parents to say, here's Title I, here's how we spent it this year, what are your ideas, what's your feedback? We also will have some focus groups, if you're interested in attending and, you know, learning more about it, or if you have ideas about how to better spend the money. We have these CDs, we'll send out a notification to everybody if they would like to come. And then, you know, going back to our staff, our staff, of course, need to be informed, that's my job. So I will make sure that I go to the May faculty meetings, I've already reserved the time with our principals to be able to do that. There's some resources, without any continued questions.
Now, I'm glad you explained this, and I think perhaps we should have been a little more clear. Title I, they can give us funding until the cows come home. We're happy to have it. I think more of our concern is in your poverty levels that we're reporting due to the free lunch, which is a conversation that even you and I can have a great amount of time because the numbers are so different. I don't want to waste too much time, but I did have a question about the upcoming summer, the private C A program, and how are we paying for that this year? We had a grant last year, I understand that, is that, is that something that you're funding this year? Or is that going to be funded by another grant?
Might have to pass that on. We received a second community schools grant.
You know, I have the contracts from last year. Are kids bused in for that? And is the busing covered by that grant and the cost? Because I did notice that we just had a pretty significant increase in the transportation.
The $150,000 grant is earmarked for that type of program. And it's any child who, well, it actually supports not only children who could not necessarily afford a program during the summer, so we use our free and reduced lunch numbers. We also, as a result of the Y, the Northern Westchester Y, which also serves as summers in North Salem. Because that's how we learned about it, is that parents who live on the border asked the director to contact us because they were interested in the program. So the Y program actually reduced the cost of that, of let's say, a week-long or so. So the Y program actually reduced the cost of that, of let's say, a week-long or so program by one hundred dollars as a result of just, that our numbers are a little different from Westchester's. So that was a benefit to full K parents. No, no. The idea is that any parent, but we certainly would hope to have some additional funds that would allow us to do it, otherwise we couldn't.
Yeah, and Michelle, maybe I'll contact you about, about the numbers, which is what I think our concerns are in the future, as far as when they have such high poverty rates that are not, they seem to be kind of, that is, go to, been in contact with several county sections. They seem to be very often, in fact, they're very interested in knowing how you pass that number because people, they don't qualify for certain grants that the towns, I mean, as counties would want to get, because we are considered at seventy-six percent of that as well. So our concern is more long-term reporting, if there's five, forty percent poverty rates when we do, the numbers don't fit, what that will do to our households and households. And again, I'll connect with you now, but speaking of, other than the numbers, I never seen that.
Great, thank you, Ms. Ryan. Just one other question, I mean, we certainly are interested in that because we get, remember the direct registration verification consists of twenty-five percent of the children?
For numbers on that, I'm kind of going to challenge that number as well, because they're not easy to search, we have to go to the county store, so we are in the process of getting the numbers for how many households with children are, who are qualified for that, so we're going to have that number. It seems, I think we found numbers like, there are only thirteen or fourteen hundred households, total, in all, up in counties to contribute. Some of those are elevated, some of them are at this age, you know, I want to have that for numbers, I don't want to have hundreds of them just in front of us.
Just to clarify, so when one of us, as a teacher, to be a candidate in Title I, doesn't go by a free lunch, a national poverty? What are the criteria that made him spend one? I think you gave a presentation on how they're allocating the money.
A lot of slides. So, so the Title I, the way that Title I funding is allocated by the federal government, they use the federal census poverty data. So I checked with the U.S. Census Bureau, they have a division of poverty and statistics. I also checked with the Title I Office. They both said at no point does the amount of, the amount that we report in terms of free reduced lunch on our grant in August, at no point does that factor in to the amount of federal funding that is allocated to us. It's instead used for local decision making.
But the state money we get is, is a, what they call combined wealth ratio, a lot of that is determined by that, by the poverty.
Please use the mic.
Yeah.
No!
Stand up!
There's nothing called, I have to teach myself about this, so I don't know if that all, combined wealth ratio, that or that.
Yeah, I'm just looking.
But, right, combined wealth ratio, that's something, a calculation that's used to determine state aid, so the numbers that we get, you know, the state numbers.
I don't know if that's for...
I think it has to do with the state.
I'm not sure if it's, okay, so this would be the federal funding for...
Yeah, the state funding that we get, I believe, is determined by that, I think it has something to do with it, from what I understand, but it, you know, like I said, the numbers still don't match. So we're trying, we're just trying to figure out how we're reporting just such unusual numbers, you know, because it is concerning. You know, I want to sell my house down the road, you know, whether it's five years or six years from now, I don't think if somebody searches our district with what we're paying in taxes, and they see that we have a forty percent poverty level, I, I think that's going to be disturbing for a buyer. So again, I'll get in touch. Okay.
One other thing that I, that we do know about the combined wealth ratio is that it is a combination of your reported state, of your reported taxes and the assessed value of your home. I mean, that's all that we know about that.
Yeah, I'm actually on the border census for you for the town of Southeast, so I was able to see some information, and we fall with that, you know, we do fall very well on the state, so, you know, it's just very confusing.
I'm sorry, what was the total funding you said that you received last year? Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
For Title I, Mr. Trace?
Title I.
Looked like with the rollover amount for the, are you talking sixteen seventeen or this school year?
Well, this school year.
This school year, I believe it was three hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Okay, so if we take that, divide it by the number of population we have in the town of Southeast, that's eighteen thousand people, I just Googled it, and it came up, okay? We take that three hundred and fifty-eight thousand divided by eighteen thousand people, that comes out to about twenty dollars per person. Household, average of four to five people, maybe a hundred dollars per year, all right? You divide that, twenty dollars per person, by three hundred and fifty-six, that's five cents a day. Is the risk really worth, worth the reward? My poverty value go down? I think not. Everybody else here probably agrees with me as well.
But, Mr. Trace, that, what I, the question is, is that ninety-nine percent of districts across the state, only two districts across New York State do not receive Title I funding.
Okay, but learn what, I'll be more than happy to pay the hundred dollars a year due to not have my place, like my school and my town labeled as poverty district level. And you brought a fire in Hills, oh great, that's a Westchester County borders of granite, you can't...
Right, that's exactly my point. They receive Title I funding, they designate all their schools as school-wide, so that's exactly why Title I isn't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily determine, or isn't just solely allocated on, on poverty. That's exactly my point.
I guess with a dollar, twenty dollars per person for a year, it's not worth it. It's not, you're going to label this town as a poverty level one, or whatever it's going to be, and I don't want that, and I don't stand for anybody here, I assume, that's why we're here.
I'll pay a hundred dollars, then with a hundred thousand.
Absolutely.
Is there another question?
I have a question.
Yes. I don't know about that. What I, what I did find out from that, the gentleman I spoke with, that the federal census bureau, is that it is based on, what he told me, is the amount that we're allocated is based on census data. So they have, we have the big census every ten years, but he was mentioning that there's something called the American Community Survey Data, that's given to one percent of the population, a sampling, one percent sample, they extrapolate that out, run it through an algorithm, and that's the amount that we receive in terms of federal funding. That's what he said.
The school district doesn't have to report anything to the federal government of state as far as crime taking place on their campuses and like?
Crime, no. We, we report each summer, disciplinary's, disciplinary's, via, thank you, it's called a beta report, violent and disruptive incident report, that is what is reported to, to New York State, and it has to hit certain categories in order for it to qualify as a beta report, but that's the only thing that we report to the state.
What people are saying is they don't like the stigma that they attach to those monies.
Not worth it.
It's not worth it.
Not worth it.
You're telling me it's not worth it, they see them in the context of life. We want to be seen in the context of life as well, we don't want...
Microphone.
I have JFK gaming rights.
That's not Jim Brian, just after my administrative roles.
Okay, we're done. Do you want to take a break, please, if you want?
No!
All right, action item. First act I concerns the approval of the postseason administrative budget and the election of board members for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Then, do you have, did you give us any insight, perhaps?
Yes, this is manual requirement for Board of Education to the postseason administrative budget.
Okay. And Ms. Nielsen, do you have anything to add? Sure, you got it. Give a motion, I'm second by Mrs. Cobb. Questions or comments by the board? Seeing on, all those in favor? Motion passing seven zero. Action item number two, the approval of resolutions for amendments to contracts for superintendent, assistant superintendent, and Director of Human Resources regarding the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen salary freeze, additional health insurance premium contributions, and decreased vacation buyback days. That's all. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, as explained in the resolution, the superintendent, assistant superintendents, and Director of Human Resources are freezing their salary for next year, they're adding to their health insurance, the superintendent is increasing six percent, the rest of us are increasing three percent to bring us all to the same level, and we're decreasing our vacation buyback days.
Can I ask a question? Was there a contract, any, attached to that, or no?
No, there was none.
Okay. So, to make it clear for people like me, when you say you're increasing the insurance premium contribution, what does that mean for you?
Yes, that means the contribution we make, the district contributes so much to the health insurance and the employee contributes a percentage, we're increasing our percentage to eighteen percent.
Okay. We'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson, I'll get right back to you next time. Questions or comments to the board concerning this matter? So this entirely came from, that's you, in fact, you're in. This didn't come from the board?
No. Right, from the executive team, from the district's executive team, correct.
Okay. And I appreciate that of the head of the board. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passing seven zero. Action item number three concerns the approval of resolution for memorandum of agreement with AAV regarding twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen salary freeze for Administrators Association of Brewster and a one-year extension of current contract terms.
Yes, the Administrators Association made a proposal to us, to the Board of Education, that they would like to freeze their salary for next year, and with the, to extend their contract under the same terms for one more year. But this will freeze their salary for next year, then just roll over everything to the following year.
So we'll take a motion, then we'll take a second and discuss with that. Take a motion, please. Thank you, Diane. Questions or comments in the board concerning this matter?
Could you repeat your intro to it one more time?
The Administrators Association of Brewster made a proposal that they would like to freeze their salary for next year, enroll it over for, roll over the transit conditions in their contract to one more year. Thanks.
So again, this is coming from this administrative unit?
Correct.
Which upon them is a voluntary, is actually deadening the district's savings?
Correct.
You have a question?
When you say, Kathy, when you say that you're, you're extending the contract?
We have to negotiate every R B unit, we have to negotiate their contracts every so many years. Now, I think it was two thousand and sixteen that we negotiated the AAV contract, and it went to two thousand and twenty. They're volunteering to take a salary freeze, but they want us to roll over the contract one more year, so we won't be negotiating that to two thousand and twenty-one versus two thousand and twenty.
You saying that the salary freeze is tied to a one-year contract extension? Okay, so there was an email that went out to district employees, not mentioning contract extension.
No, we're not talking about the executive team, we're talking about the Administrators Association.
So we are a, a district that hires and fires like crazy. We have to dismiss six administrators in the last year and a half. So when we go from a three-year contract to a four-year contract, what does that do? That extends our liability of how much we're going to have to pay if we decide that this new flavor of the month administrator is no longer worthy of being an employee of the Brewster Central School District. It increases, it does not save us, it increases our liability. We have administrator after administrator that are now sitting home, collecting pay, and we, I personally think that increasing from a three to a four year increases our liability of having to pay up if we ever want to dismiss that, that person. So maybe I could just clear, clear something up. A probationary administrator does not, the, the contract is with the unit, and we're talking about the principals, assistant principals, directors, assistant directors. The contract is with the unit, it's not necessarily with an individual, if that makes sense? So it's not like any probationary administrator, sorry, guys, is guaranteed to be here for three years because this would be renewed. Instead, it is, the agreement with the unit. Every probationary administrator has to meet certain performance expectations in order to be asked back the following year. It's different for tenure, but for probationary, that's the, I don't know if I, if I explained that wrong.
That's helpful, but if, so does that mean, if we have a vice principal that passes probationary period, and now they have a four-year contract, that they then have a contract, a four-year contract? And so, I mean, stack, I don't know from home, I couldn't pick them out of a lineup, but he was not probationary, and I know all the reasons why we didn't pursue whatever, but we're paying out his contract. So would that be a four-year contract, or would that be three, or would that not apply to this whatsoever?
It, it doesn't apply whatsoever, because a contract has nothing to do with probation and tenure. Once, once an employee burns tenure, it doesn't matter what the contract says. It's not like, Michelle was trying to explain, it's not an individual contract like the four of us have here. We have individual contracts, but the administrators' union is a whole different thing. They're just like teachers, with tenure, it's seniority.
I think...
No, that's... As long as you have those four contracts...
All right, I think the confusion is that, I, I know that notice has to be given to the top administrators regarding whether or not you intend to extend their contracts, and I think that the wording was just confusing. So if one more, if you could just explain that one more time, I think that everyone will have a better idea.
If I could take one sentence bracketed, basically, the contract extension doesn't guarantee any administrator that they're going to be here in four years. What it does, it sets the terms and conditions for those administrators who will be here in four years, and whether or not they'll be here in four years has to do with tenure and probation, it has nothing to do with this contract or its extension.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Okay, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, there's a discussion, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passed at seven zero. Thank you again for your contributions to the budget. We can, and why don't we talk on that? So this is, this is where, we just picked up some money here, folks. Is it attached to action items? So this is important.
So as a result of the contributions from the total of twenty administrators, we're able to reinstate one of the positions that was reduced, and that was a third, the third grade teacher at CD Star, because... He would be very negligent. we would be very negligent if we allowed that the third grade to be reduced to eight sections essentially and those class sizes would be anywhere between twenty-seven to twenty-eight students and that would just be, you know, unacceptable. So, the third grade teacher position's being reinstated as a result of these give backs and I want to mention that the AAV has agreed to freeze it in the past. This is not the first time that they've decided to freeze their salaries for the sake of contributing to an effort to try to hold onto a teacher, so I want to thank them. And in terms of the other position that was really critical because it's a mandated service position, it's a social work position at C D Star, we need to revisit that at the end of the annual review process. We are mandated to provide counseling services to children who, whose I A Ps stipulated they would receive that counseling, so we can't overlook that. It will be a strain for three social workers to try to absorb the cases of students who received the mandated services at C D Star. So, we definitely are going to be looking at ways to make that happen because we need to make sure we provide those services to those children.
Okay, action item number four pertains to approval of tax refunds and approval of amendment number eight of the process.
Yes, these refunds were reviewed by the assessors office and also attorneys and our district treasurer.
Thank you, we'll take a motion, please, for your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Ms. O'Brien, Ms. Carrie, and Ms. Carl. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passed at seven zero. Action item number five concerns the approval of agreement for security consulting services. Again, as Mr. Carlson.
Yes, when we held our community forum back in, back in March, when we discussed the potential for having a security assessment, we reached out to a few different organizations to provide us with proposals. We are proposing Connor Security Consulting, the proposal includes two days of onsite observations and a informational session with administration and other members of the building safety teams to help us work to improve our safety procedures.
Thank you, Carlson. Take a motion, please, for your consideration of this action item. We got Carrie and Glenn, thank you both. Questions or comments from the board? Yes, ma'am.
Just where, is this through B O Cs that we need to try and find?
This is not through B O Cs. We considered B O Cs, however, we wanted an outside perspective. B O Cs helps us develop our programs and protocols, so we felt that B O Cs may not be the best suit for this type of assessment. We wanted an outside perspective.
One more question, Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, I have another question. I guess, is there a reason that we see a need for this now?
I think after the tragedy in Parkland, we questioned all of the things that we're doing and we wanted an outside perspective to see if this were, if what we're doing is sufficient. Again, we work closely with B O Cs and we trust them and their judgment, however, we thought it might be a good idea to search elsewhere and see if we, if we're up to task in the procedures that we have.
Hey, I just want to make a suggestion, if I could for one second. I know an audit was done about ten years ago where some of these safety particulars were pointed out and, and nothing was done, nothing was implemented. So, now we're going to be spending money on another audit. Why can't we implement what we learned from the original audit?
Yeah, and I understand that an audit was completed ten years ago and our building level safety team and our chef committee review obviously issues of safety at each meeting. The particulars of, you know, that you're describing that were not implemented, if you can, you know, let me know what, what those are and we can look into that.
Okay. I'm asking you to.
Thank you.
If you study, if we're not, if we're not original, if you have your own, if you have, 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 if
So is that, we know the benefits, you know, to the audit committees of having outside eyes look in, but they're specific to the school district. So because there's things you can and can't do, and know something can't do on the news and this and that, for poor, you can't do some things that you wanted to, because you're bad children. So this is specific to the school district.
Correct. And the specialty areas in school spots.
Yes, ma'am.
This is when you were mentioning that her husband operated a service.
Right.
At the safety meeting, we had like a month or so ago, or two months ago, it wasn't just Scott. I mean, Scott spoke very eloquently, 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 and explained what he would do to the district. But there were like four or five retired police officers, detectives, that all stood up and they would love to give their services to the district to help. So I think we'll follow up with that, because that would be a great asset for our district. Instead of, you know, spending money on other people that have nothing to do with our district.
Steve, if I could just also make a comment. You know, we're talking about safety here and security for $2,800.
Yes, thank you.
It is money, in my opinion, well spent, because without safety, everything else is moot. So I think if we could do these things in conjunction with those sort of offered services, we may get a more complete picture. But again, without safety, everything is moot.
I think you utilize, we have a well community, but not necessarily you who you have that, but you need to use there, but work with the community, you can use the resources we have.
Thank you. Just wanted to take a moment. It is a school night, and I've got a lot of teachers here who need to leave pretty soon. So my name is Elaine Karshman. I'm the president of Brewster Teachers Association, and we truly appreciate the Board of Education's diligence regarding the current budget crisis, but we're truly concerned about the loss of these vital positions, all of them, not just the ones at C D Star. Every position is going to negatively impact our Brewster students' learning. So we would just ask that we either get together to talk about ways that we can reinstate and maybe even look if we are going to be cutting in mental health or student services, such as guidance counselors, that maybe we rethink moving some of our staff to different schools, since they are experts in those schools, and there are going to be fewer people to help them and help the students. It's really all about the students, and we want the best for Brewster's kids. So we would really appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's important, just so we don't lose track. I have action item item number five regarding the security consulting services. I've got a motion, I've got a second, we have to get on that. So all those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero. Action item number seven concerns approval of policies. Oh, Miss Gosh, you've not done that today?
No. It's six.
It's six. Okay, let's do the approval of proposed pilot agreements. Greenwich Hospitality Group, Mr. Carlson.
Yes, this is a pilot agreement that's being proposed by the district. You may recall that the local industrial development agencies, in this case, Department of County, negotiates pilot agreements with commercial businesses operating the district for reduced payment. In lieu of being on the property tax roll, the pilot agreement extends for a period of 10 years, at which point the property will become fully taxable. We've reached out to our attorneys, and in their opinion, we have, there's no reason why the district should oppose this.
Would you please, your consideration of pilot agreements to the board? Thank you, Diane, thank you, Carrie. Questions, comments from the board, any matters? It's being done, although in favor. Motion passes seven zero. Okay. Now, moving on to Miss Gosh's favorite action item, approval of the policies for the first read.
Thank you, Dr. Jambo. These policies have been discussed and reviewed by the policy committee, and we submit them to you for your first read approval.
So much. We'll take the motion, please. Thank you, Mary Kay. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Questions, comments from the board? It's being done, although in favor. The motion passes seven zero. And last, I've got an issue, it's action item number eight, which concerns the approval of the 2018-2019 school calendar revised.
The Calendar Development Committee, which consists of the leadership of the DTA and the AAB, has had a number of meetings associated with the proposed 1819 school calendar. It was originally put forth to the board on February 30th and was adopted. However, New York State still has a standing state aid committee that's reviewing various proportions of existing policy. What we do know is that the change that has gone into effect is that instead of looking at weekly hours to qualify for state aid, the requirements are, or the requirements now are, what actually the committee did approve a couple of weeks ago, is that at the K six level, the required number of hours per year would be 900. That school districts are expected to have instructional hours, and the requirement for grade 712 is 990 hours. And so that goes, that particular change has been factored into our calendar. The, as I said, that committee is still heating, but we feel based upon actions taken by our local BOCs that we can put this board again to the Board of Education. There are a couple of changes that we made in light of feedback that we see from the community, and those changes include the extension of the February break, so that it is a whole week rather than a Thursday, Friday, and Monday, Tuesday, because we had a pretty bad winter this winter, and for some families, the February break was the only time they could get, because the April break was taken as a result of the days that we had to get back. We also moved the spring break one week from the original time, which was the week of the 22nd, to the week before, which is the week of the 15th through the 19th. And we also took away the May 24th, which is a Friday. Traditionally, we try to extend, if the calendar permits, the Memorial Day weekend, so we removed that date so that we could have that day added to the February break. We also have a, the last day of school, which is also a early at least, day is June 26th. So those are the changes, and we also built in, so that it's really clear in the calendar that when we are beyond our five days that we go into the schedule for snow or inclement weather or any other disasters, that we, that it's really clear that all of those days are removed and that, you know, with the hope then that people don't make plans that then result in them having to potentially, you know, make arrangements that will impact their ability to be paid. And so we also included in bright red at the bottom that spring recess is subject to change, so be sure to not make irreparable plans for the time. So we hope that none of the changes that we made will be impacted by this committee that's still meeting. But as I said, we took our lead from our local BOCs, put forth its calendar, and feel pretty strongly about this being the final calendar. We also wanted to put it forward because a number of outside groups that depend upon our calendar are on hold, so they need to be able to make decisions.
Okay, so we'll take a motion, please, for consideration of the 2018-2019 school calendar. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Glenn. Yep. Questions, comments concerning the calendar?
Just a quick question, procedural legend. Do we have to do something to take off the calendar when they're already approved? Just by saying revise, we're okay with this? The updates is updated.
And again, if you kept on, the top of the calendar is subject to change as per number station.
Okay.
The committee is still meeting. Thank you.
Questions, comments? If you're in favor, all those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Move our attention now to the consent agenda. Would you please, your consideration of the consent agenda? Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Questions or comments concerning the consent agenda? It's being done, although in favor. Motion passes seven zero. Remarks? Board? Your comments, please? Hey, you're good for now? That's fine. Public remarks and information, if you are a juror. I've been alerted that a special guest from the students. Yeah, sure. Come on up. Welcome. Thank you for your patience.
All right. First, sorry. First of all, I wanted to thank the superintendent for allowing me a couple extra minutes. And I wanted to thank all the teachers who have helped me out with this little speech letter, whatever you want to call it. I know it's late, and so I'll try to be quick. I just want to pay attention, because this is very important. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sasha Rubio. I'm a senior year at Brewster, and I'd like to talk about the board's recent decision to move around our school district psychologists. Specifically, both of the high school psychologists, who will be working in different buildings in the upcoming school year. They will then be replaced by psychologists currently working at other schools in the district. It is my belief that this decision is absolute devastation to students relying on these psychologists. I remember when I met Mr. Capshaw my freshman year. I was having problems at home, and I sought help from a teacher, who then introduced us. Ever since that day, he has helped me in so many troubling situations, as has helped countless other students. I'm not basing my praise for our school psychologists off my experience alone. I've heard nothing but positive things about both of them from every student next to me too. And I can't even put into words how formative a resource they are for the many students at Brewster High School who deal with mental health issues. And let me emphasize the fact that there are so many students who have struggled with depression, anxiety, trauma, eating disorders, self-harm, suicidal thoughts, or worse. I myself am a survivor of multiple suicide attempts, and I am lucky enough to have therapists and parents with good enough insurance to pay for my help. But not everyone is so lucky. Some kids have parents who are struggling so much that they can barely pay their bills, let alone pay for their child's treatment. Other kids come from broken families who won't even acknowledge the fact that they have mental illness. These kids rely solely on our school psychologists. They have the only resource they have, and taking them away prevents them from getting help. I'm happy to say that I am starting to get better, but mental illness never takes vacation, even when you have to go to school. It gives me comfort, as I'm sure it does for many students, to know there is a trained professional available who I have formed a relationship with, who I already know and trust, and who can give me the help that I desperately need. I'm graduating in two months, so this change won't directly affect me, but I can promise you it will harm the current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors who share my struggle. It's important to note that there has been little information that is shared with us about this change, even to the employees directly involved. I've found when I bring it up to people, it's often the first they've heard anything about it. I've gone through your website, and I've searched through dozens of board meeting documents, and I have found nothing as to why or how this change came to be. When Ms. Lott spoke about this, spoke about this with her amazing letter in previous meetings, she was met with silence. And I know you're probably going to tell me you cannot discuss personnel issues in a public forum, but a change as big as this one cannot and should not be made with such little conversation. I believe you hold your titles because you care about the well-being of the students. I believe you are trying to do what's best for us, and I believe there are no ulterior motives. With all due respect, you don't spend the majority of your time with students, so how can you make a decision like this without consulting the ones who are directly affected? It seems like you may not fully understand our means, especially those of us with a mental illness. If you want to do what is right for us, I urge you not to make this change. Keep all of our district psychologists in the buildings they've been working in for years. Let them continue with the work they've been doing so well, and let them maintain the relationships they have developed with students who desperately need them. Thank you, and I hope you will.
Well, I just want to.
Microphone.
One thing about 180 is one of the highest drinking by underage students. We've had three suicides in our community. You know, like disrupting, disrupting this, we look at it as a staff change. Disrupting this disrupts lives. But I just want to reiterate that we do have significant need for our children, and for us to move any of that without their input is a dire situation. So I just want to.
I know, it's beautiful. You spoke better than anyone here today.
And let's not forget, because we already had two suicide happen.
I'm pretty loud. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
My kind of a question about the calendar. So I did my math, and on the calendar, it says there is 182 student days, which includes five snow days. Theoretically, let's say Mother Nature is kind next year, and we have zero snow days. That means that May 28th, April 22nd, May 24th, April 23rd, and May 23rd are now days off. So those five days come off of that 182, which actually gives us 177 student days. Now, I know state regs state that superintendent conference days may be used at district discretion. Those superintendent conference days can be used toward the 180-day requirement. But my concern is that we really only have 177 student days, whereas comparable districts in the area have more than that. I personally, we have 182 solid student days plus four P V days on top of that. Now, I understand that's going to be a collective bargaining issue when you sit down with your teachers, but again, I feel that Brewster is kind of behind the curve in this, and I don't think we're keeping up with our peer districts. And that kind of goes with the residency issue, is why are we lagging? The big question is, why is Brewster lagging behind our peer districts in these, really, I feel, very important policies, procedures, and district regs, for lack of a better word? So that was my question. And we are not. The 182 is padded with the five days, and we went around and around a number of times talking about how to make sure that within the, how do we meet the 180-day requirement? So an additional five days plus four superintendent conference days, if we can use them, obviously, if the new regs, we can use those if in fact we do have the similar kind of winter that we had this winter. So you're saying that if I take all the student days per month? That 182. There's 182. I know. It includes five. Right. But then, let's say magically, we don't use any snow days. Five days. Five days come off of that. Mrs. O'Callaghan.
Hi. How are you? I've been doing the calendar for forever. There's actually 187 days. Yeah. We can talk, but we have been. I've also been keeping records. I've been keeping records of all the snow days, two-hour delays, and early dismissals since 1995. I can show you. I know, it's making me real nervous. But we've never, ever, ever had no snow days. The least was one, the most was nine. I know, I understand that. And the mean is always five. I've done it 100 times. No, I know that.
It's a great idea to talk some more about. Wait, I wasn't paying attention. You're looking for more lab hours, I understood, right?
Yes. That's me, I'm science girl, yeah.
I thought it was on your lab hours. Okay. We'll take a motion, please, for you.
I just had, I just had questions. I'm just waiting here patiently. Do you want to go? This is not calendar related. Did you vote on calendar or not?
Yes.
So I just, I want to move on to budget. So, you know, I imagine that's the other week. I think there's a lack of clarity. So I work in business. I run a business, a business unit. And whenever I have to do anything around budget time, I have to show my last three years, actual versus budget, what we had, and then I have to do projections forward. If you look at the budget that was supplied, we don't have that level of details. We have 2016 to 2017 school year, actual expense, don't have a comparison with the budget. Adopted budget for 2017, 2018, there's no parameters of what we would do. When you go, and I'll reference this, if you go to Chappaqua, Chappaqua's budget was posted on March 24th. They put actual versus budget for three years past, and then they put the budget for the coming year with a granular level of detail. And we don't have this in what's put up here. Now, I understand that Brewster gets a lot more state aid, and that state aid did not come down for a while. Chappaqua still gets $7 million, and they had to finalize their budget. The other thing that we talked about was last meeting, what happens if the budget is voted down? There is a lot of discontent in the district, more so than many of the previous years, about, you know, a $10 million increase from 2016 to 2018. That's a lot of money for us to be able to justify when we don't necessarily see how everything is spent. So the request is for us to have that level of granularity published for next year. I would say it should be published at a much earlier point in time so that people can dig into the details and get a better understanding. We're now on track to have to vote for this in 20 days without any level of granularity and accountability of where the money has gone. The other thing that I think is critical for us is the understanding of how much we pay consultants who work in the district and how much we pay for anyone that is dismissed. I know you can't do it on an individual basis, but you could do it on an aggregate level of each year. We talked about last, last time we met, that there was a consultant that came in for $7,500 a day, plus her travel expenses. That is horrifying. I don't care who it is. Nobody deserves $7,500 a day. It's not justified for this small community. We also have people that come in at $900 a day who mentor new academics. That clearly hasn't been working for us, because we keep dismissing our new academics. And the biggest point, my husband is a teacher, and he's a mentor, and he gets a $2,000 stipend, part of his contract, because they're saying, let him be this teacher's mentor. You, at the end of that desk, have the most popular and loved principal that has ever worked in Brewster. She is the perfect example of being a woman of youth in Brewster. And let her show them how to do. Because I'm sure it's not a problem to get her $5,000 extra a year to do that and pay out vacation days. So I want to encourage you to consider internal resources for being able to do that. Line item consultants, line item payments out to dismissed staff, and provide a much more detailed, granular level of the budget on the three-year actual versus budget, so that we could see where we're spending our budget.
With regard to the budget presentation in New York State, everything that we do is prescribed by New York State. So New York State has a uniform system of accounts. What's presented in our budget is the uniform system of accounts. It allows school districts to compare apples to oranges. So we provided, as you mentioned, we provide 1819 compared to 1718, budget to budget variance in terms of dollars and percentages. In addition to that, I footnoted any, I perform variance analysis to give a greater level of detail for any changes in the budget. So there's also an introduction, which provides us an overview of all the challenges that we face. You know, we've been discussing state aid and tax cap, et cetera, et cetera. But we do have a greater level of detail than we have in the past. If you take a look back on our budgets of, you know, two or three years ago, we're continuing our evolution of the budget. So I, you know, I will, you know, be speaking to the Board of Education at the end of tonight to ask for direction and what, you know, what additional information needs to be incorporated in the budget. What we've provided is what's required by New York State. The supplemental information will be forthcoming on May 1st, when the entire budget statement is due. One thing that we're adding in this year is a staffing deposit that was requested at the last meeting. So it is continuing to evolve, and we are continuing to provide supplemental schedules and information. And I'll, again, I'll be reaching out to Board of Education for further direction.
Can I just ask a question? I saw the budget you put up, and again, I'll reference MAEPA. Of course, it's by state, they have regulations by 1040s to the district clerk. And then you wrote A161. MAEPA put it as salary of the district clerk. We will not know what A161 is. It's the subdivision. So can you please put the definition in?
On the left-hand column?
Yeah, I'll show you. And I even referenced A1. Yeah. So you can just write the definition, so people know what you're talking about. You know, it's a code.
To the left of the code is the description of the object. So could you?
It's a summary. Here they have the detail.
I'm sorry, could I look it back?
I referenced the code. If you looked at it, 449, it's professional type document. You have the summary.
And there's no such thing as a code 449. These are the S P N 1 codes, which are established by the state. So there is no code as 449. That's unique to.
1010. 1010.
1010 is a function code, and that's all the word.
I don't know the specifics on that in C G A, but look, .45.
.45 is a universal code, and that applies. MAEPA is calling it 452.
Okay. They're all called, I imagine.
Right, right. And you can hear.
I just want the definition instead of your summary, detail. That's all I'm asking for, detail.
Could I, do you mind?
Want to be back?
I'm not exactly sure what you're saying, but I'd like to follow up the conversation with you.
Please do, I'll be right back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session. We have a meeting with council to discuss contract negotiations for a particular person. Better?
Yeah.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn to executive session. We have to meet with council to discuss contract negotiation for a particular person and some guidance.